We started the meeting at 6:00 and then went into closed session to discuss, to receive legal advice on potential litigation regarding Adventist Hospital Health Care's petition to relocate. And so we are now back with the beginning of our regular agenda. And let me just first say that if people wonder where I'm wearing my suit this evening, some people have noticed, it's because the police chief and the deputy city attorney and I spent six hours -- what did I say? Deputy city attorney, sorry, manager.
It's okay.
Well, I got you another job with more money.
Okay.
Anyway, we were in Annapolis today to testify on the city's request for adding off-site alcohol beverage licenses. And I can characterize it as we each had six hours taken out of our day for a total of three minutes' worth of testimony and business.
Three minutes each or three minutes total?
Three minutes total.
Just checking.
So, that is the day of, what the day tends to consist of when we go to Annapolis to lobby on behalf of priorities of the city. It's necessary work, but it can be deadly and boring and nonproductive for 99% of the time that you're doing it, but you have to be there for those three minutes.
You need a good hobby.
Yeah, well, I took reading material. And people were texting and checking email and doing whatever. And occasionally, we got to listen to some interesting conversation about the 30-some alcohol bills that were up before the committee today statewide. Believe me, you don't want to know. So, we don't have any additional agenda items tonight and any upcoming items. Let me just point out that next week, March 7th, we have a presentation, public hearing, and work session on the proposed subdivision at 119 to 127 Geneva Avenue. We also have follow-up discussion on the tree ordinance and related matters, which includes program for resident selection of street trees, further discussion of credit for pre-planting trees, required disclosure of the tree ordinance in real estate transactions, and any other items that we need to do to finish up our discussion on the tree ordinance. Following Monday, the 14th, we have a presentation from the Housing Opportunities Commission as requested by Councilmember Clay on the Aspen Court properties. And on Monday, March 21st, we get to Ward 1 night. So those are some of the highlights of some upcoming agenda items. At this point, we'll go to public comment. And if anybody would like to make any comments. Wait, before we do that, let me recognize that we have some Boy Scouts with us in the audience this evening. Are you Troop 33 or a different troop? Troop 33 to Tacoma Park, welcome. And hope you find the time that you spend with us more stimulating than the time that I spent in Annapolis today. Would anybody like to make any public comments? If you want to, please come to the podium and keep your comments to three minutes and identify yourself and speak about anything that isn't on our regular meeting agenda item. Okay. Seeing no public comments, we'll move to council comments. And the lights are working again this week.
Yay.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank you all for filling in for me last week during Ward 4 night. I was off at the hospital as my son and his wife were having their first child, my 10th grandchild. I thank you for covering. I understand that we had some young people, had many people come from Ward 4, including some young people. I was glad to see that. And I hope that young people will also participate in the upcoming Ward night. I think we have Ward 1 next, don't we?
Uh huh.
Okay. When is it?
I just announced that.
Okay, well, I wasn't paying attention. What can I tell you?
We weren't saying it. What do you think?
And I also --
March 21st.
March 21st, great. And I just also recognize that Pat Lovelace, the peace delegate, is not with us tonight. He's home in his apartment with his nurse, Keisha.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize for not being here last week. I had to travel for business to a combination of Austin, San Francisco, and North Carolina in a four-day span. So I apologize for that. I do want to quickly give my abbreviated version of my budget comments, which I shared with the city manager and council by email and comment on the Speed Camera funds. So I'll do that quickly. First, on the budget items, I do not think we should raise the tax rate. So I think we should stay with the current tax rate of .58 cents per hundred. The one exception I would be willing to entertain to that is a one-cent increase on the tax rate specifically dedicated to the environmental initiatives that were put forth by the Task Force for Environmental Action. I think we can fund some of those without having to do that, but that would be the one situation where I'd be willing. I think Tacoma Park residents are in favor of returning Tacoma Park to being an environmental leader and are willing to pay something that's dedicated specifically to those efforts. The second item that was specifically asked for input by the city manager was whether we should look for more cost recovery through city services, charging more for the services. And in general, I'm not in favor of that. There's a few limited cases where I am. One of them is recreational services for adults that are not seniors. They're likely able to pay for those services, and I think they should just be at cost. But for services for seniors, for youth, I do not think we should be pursuing a cost recovery model. And then the second area is around garbage collection. I would be open to a charge for garbage collection beyond a standard-sized can, which would encourage everybody to recycle more and compost more. And specifically related to the Speed Camera Fund, I think disagree with the majority of the council. And I think we should view those funds as much more fungible across public safety opportunities and should not just dedicate the majority of those funds to sidewalk construction and definitely not the ADA improvements as they've been taking place. The improvements in my ward that cost a significant amount of money, for the most part, were very incremental in terms of improving ADA in any significant way. I was supportive of that because I thought there was limited opportunities to use the funds for other things. I was incorrect about that. I think they're, by the reading of law, you could use them for any public service measure. I understand some council members are concerned about the idea that you would use those funds for ongoing salary and the idea that the Speed Camera funds might dry up at some point. The state law could change. People could stop speeding in those areas. And I would take the perspective of look at and ask residents what they would like us to do in that case. And I think most residents, if we explain it to them, if they understand that we're using the Speed Camera funds for some public safety purposes, like paying for police officers other than the sidewalks, that they will understand that that is something that's slightly risky in terms of future revenues and would rather have us do that now and potentially, if those revenues go away, have to raise taxes in the future than have to spend money on something that's not the most critical need for our community. And I view that not all of the sidewalk construction or ADA repairs, but most of them is not the critical, highest priority for our community. And I think residents would understand that. They would do the same within their own personal budgets in running their household if they could. And that's my perspective on that. Last, very small item is, I was wondering if the city manager has gotten any feedback or response from Pepco on the situation with the poles that are being replaced in Ward 1. I know there's a lot going on, so I would understand if you haven't. But it is a situation where Pepco has now put in taller poles. All of the high-powered lines are on those poles. And it seems now that only the things like cable and internet are still on the old poles. But until those get moved, we now have dual poles and big piles of sand and mud in the right-of-way. And so I'm wondering if we have any insight into what their plan is going forward.
No, I believe the Public Works Director was going to follow up with that. Councilmember Wright, and I'll check with her tomorrow and get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
I have one announcement, and it is that the Tacoma Park Folk Festival is having another concert at Capital City Cheesecake. And I hope some of the council members will consider joining us. This four-series concert of young people playing at the Capital City Cheesecake is the second Thursday of each month. And the next one is coming up on Thursday, March 10th at 7:00 PM. And it's a local jazz group called TNT. So I hope you'll consider joining us. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I have one question and one comment. The question has to deal with the question of downed lines. And in front of my house on Wildwood Drive, there's a couple of lines that are laying on the ground on private, well, I don't know what's private property, City right-of-way, but it's not in the street. They're clearly not power lines. They're probably cable lines or abandoned cable lines that might belong to one of the cable companies. But they're long, like 30 feet long. One of them's wrapped around a telephone pole to get it out of the way. But I don't know who to contact to, whether it's the city or where to start with finding out who's responsible for removing those things.
I have that issue in my ward as well.
Yeah, just always feel free just to make me aware of that situation, and we can follow up with the utilities and try to figure out who it belongs to.
Yeah, okay. Well, could you consider that done?
Yeah.
The announcement is to remind people in Ward 6, who are interested in this Tacoma Langley Sector Plan planning process, that this Thursday at the Rec Center at 7:30, there will be another, a second in a series of meetings on drafting the urban design guidelines that will eventually lead to being adopted as part of the Sector Plan. I encourage residents to attend. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
This Thursday? The 3rd.
Welcome back, Terry and Josh. Josh, thanks for your insightful email that covered much of what you said tonight, but also brought to light that our property tax, the estimation for our property tax revenues is about $390,000 or $400,000 above.
$395,000.
$395,000 above what it was this past year. So that's how much more money we'll have from that source. That's not to say that there's going to be more money from other sources that we rely on to fund our government. And that each penny of an additional tax rate is a little under $200,000, if I recall correctly. So just to give the public some sense of what these numbers are, and our budget is 20-some million dollars. And I'm also generally in favor of keeping things, keeping costs under control. I'm not, I also agree with you, Josh, that if we're going to, if we are going to raise the tax rate, I would also like to see the environmental, a sustainability coordinator hired. I also, I was also listening very closely to the discussion I've been following and learning more and more about sidewalks and where the funding comes from for them. There's this, there's a notion of being ADA compliant, and that's a complicated issue with the federal guidelines. There's a certain funding source for a program called Safe Roots to Schools, which has certain criteria. I sent an email out to my constituents in Ward 3, asking them what they would like to see as regards sidewalks and ADA. And I got about 30 responses, which was, which was good. A large number were about Allegheny Avenue. They wanted, they want Allegheny Avenue redone, the sidewalks there. Now, those sidewalks already exist. They're very narrow. And on one side of Allegheny, there's a phone pole about every 30 feet, right in the middle of the narrow sidewalk. So that would be a very difficult sidewalk to replace. It's currently Tier 2, which means second priority in the big, in the priority sheet that we've got in our very large Excel spreadsheet, which lists every street in the city. There weren't a lot of other calls for sidewalk, new sidewalks, although there are some parts in my ward that don't have sidewalks. Some call for repair, but that Allegheny, I think, makes sense because it is a route to downtown from a good part of the ward. And a lot of people use it. But you can't really walk on the sidewalk if you have a stroller without going out into the street. So I'm, I'd like to see us continue our conversation about where sidewalks go and how we spend money on sidewalks, including disability ramps. I think it's an important topic. And also how we go from ward to ward and decide what we're going to improve or place, put in place. It's a complicated thing, and I think we've learned, and I think the exercise of having the, the study for all the sidewalks was a good one to have, but I think we can move beyond that, both for funding and placement and repair and all these things. So I look forward to that continued conversation. That's all.
Which will take place in about three agenda items. Any more council comments? City manager has any comments?
Just one. I just wanted to let the council know there was another change order on the public works facility renovation. It was a fairly minor amount, I believe it was under $5,000. But I'll get that more specific information to you tomorrow. Is that?
Okay. Legislative update.
Well, you told of the nice fund we had today in Annapolis. The hearing today was on the, our alcoholic beverage bill. We believe it will move forward. I think it was important that we were there today because there are a few people who have some concerns about the provision in the bill that would have applicants come before the city council first, before going to the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
And we should point out that Montgomery County did not have any difficulty with that.
Montgomery County does not have any difficulty with it. Nevertheless, the chair of the subcommittee of the Alcoholic Beverages Committee was one of the no votes in the Montgomery delegation. And so we were trying to be very clear about our position.
Who is that again?
Charlie Barclay.
And if I can just be clear, that the, the opportunity for testimony was today at the committee hearing. It then moves to the subcommittee, and that is not a place where we have an opportunity for input.
Just why we were there. There are a number of items this week, and we are going to try to get some testimony submitted on a number of the finance and budget items coming up. I think one of the things that we've been strongly urged to do is to be very strong about supporting monies for our Highway User Revenue Fund in these budget hearings. And I didn't have a chance to tell you, Mayor, but Michelle Douglas will testify on our behalf at the budget hearings tomorrow and Wednesday, speaking for the Highway User Revenue Increase for Municipalities. So that's something that we would need to, that I'm pleased we'll be able to accommodate.
Thank you. That means I won't be down there five days this week.
No. However, I would like to have somebody there on Friday, on March 4th at 3:00 PM, to testify for the Community Legacy and Neighborhood Business Works programs. I believe Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Schultz have each testified on that in the past. We have submitted a letter, but we've been contacted again by the Department of Housing and Community Development urging somebody to speak. And if there's a, great, Councilmember Robinson, I'll pass along the word and get the information to you.
Great.
That sounds wonderful. Those are the main items.
So the city will be in Annapolis a total of six days this week.
This is the heart of the time. And I guess one of the things that I've mentioned before, but I'll reiterate, and that is that so much is in flux this year in terms of finances. Usually, there's a better sense by now of where things are going. And we're not to that point. I also learned today that the General Assembly will be meeting again in September to talk about congressional redistricting. They very well may take up budget items again, like the pension or whatever items, in September. So even if something gets settled during this session, they may still get another chance before next session to deal with it. So just to put out there that there's a good amount of uncertainty about how to move forward.
And just a quick update on our, on the legislative request that came from the city that is beginning to develop legs on the removal of the exemption of portions of the personal property, of the banks for various business personal property taxes. The, the understanding that we got today was that that was a, an orphaned piece of legislation that didn't get cleaned up in, I believe, 1968, when the bank tax was restructured and...
Apparently, the language was removed from one section, but was not removed from this section when it, when it should have been. And so this is, so the, the banks have been not bringing that up for some time.
For...
What are we going to do with all the grandfathered revenue we're going to collect?
Well, we certainly heard people talking that they'd love to do a, give them a 20-year bill or more.
And additional people have taken interest in that bill, including the governor. So we'll, we'll see where that goes. And testimony on that is a week from Thursday. Anything else on legislative update? Questions? Councilmember Wright.
First, I want to thank the mayor and my fellow councilmembers who are going to testify. I know that can be very time-consuming, and I unfortunately don't have the time to do it now. So I very appreciate it, one of the many things that the mayor spends time on doing unselfishly for the city. The second thing I just wanted to comment on last week, when I was watching the film, this is connected to the budget issues. I was watching the council meeting, and this issue came up about the fact that we had an increased pension obligation and the fact that it sort of didn't jive with people based on the stock market going up so much and recovery. I wonder if we might have someone come from the pension and explain to us? Because I think one of the issues actually that's going on is that, you know, pension funds often invest in securities and investments that are not typical stock market investments. And pension funds have been hit very hard by the problem with secured ties, mortgage-backed securities. And I'd be curious to understand if that's part of what's going on. And really, for us, I mean, we're putting money into the pension fund. It'd be good for us to understand more thoroughly what's happened with the investment and, and what the plan is going forward.
I fully support that.
Anything else? Okay. We don't have any adoption of minutes this evening, so we'll move to the Police Department's annual report presentation. Chief?
I take it everyone's had an opportunity to review the report. I'm going to go through the year-end report, announce our new program called CARE, and go through the license plate reader report. And then when I get done with all three, I'm sure you'll have one or two questions you might want to ask, if that's okay. Tonight, I report to you on year 2010. Last week marked the completion of my fourth year with the city. We continued to operate at full authorized strength as we have since the first year I was appointed chief. Last year proved very challenging with the loss of more support staff. In the last four years, we've lost six civilian positions. The elimination of the administrative service manager and the communications supervisor put a great deal of additional responsibility and stress on our captain and our two lieutenants. Last year, we saw overall crime reduced by 14.7%. Some key points, which is good news to point out, is 11.1 decrease in robberies, 22.6% decrease in thefts from autos, which was the major crime during 2009, a 14.7% decrease in auto thefts. The bad news is that there was a 33.9% increase in burglaries. Although we made many arrests and closed most of those cases, that does not take away the pain of being a victim of a burglary. Most burglary victims feel violated, trespassed upon, their security levels reduced, and the pain of loss of property can be overwrought. Our number-one priority this year in the department is to reduce burglaries. We have already increased uniform and plainclothes patrols during the daylight hours. A special emphasis is going to be on the residents near the DC line, where we particularly got hit hard last year. Some highlights of the report, which I'd like to point out following. We continue to run the Speed Camera Program with one sworn officer, one civilian. And on February 26th, which was Saturday, our fifth camera went into enforcement mode. And it's working quite well, I'm told already. We offered, refused to be a victim for the third time over the weekend, and we had an all-female audience here, 16 ladies, that were very happy and participated. Went real well. Once again, we got some good feedback. So I think it was very successful for those that attended. Looking at some of our percentages, and I might add some of the charts that were requested last year by Councilman Wright, Siemens R. in this year's report. 74% of the suspects arrested last year came from outside Tacoma Park. That's up 4% from the year before. There was a 12% increase, which is the biggest shift, in arrests of DC residents, which had been steadily going down when I first got here. There was a 13% increase in drug arrests of city residents, which I attribute to our crackdown on gangs. 73% of our drug arrests are from residents outside Tacoma Park. There was a 7% increase in DUI arrests. This has steadily gone up the last four years as a result of an increased emphasis. 81%, and this is probably one of the most significant numbers I looked at and our crime analysts looked at, 81% of those arrested in Tacoma Park had prior arrest records. A very disturbing record in seeing, we're finding criminals coming here. We've begun our gang task force, and the seriousness of gang-related crime in our city continues to grow. Our increasing gang intelligence shows the problem to be bigger and more serious than any of us imagine. And we'll be, we'll be doing a briefing later on this, a month, on this issue. The last four years, I've seen our department grow and gain experience. We have a stable workforce as a result of the benefits the city government offers our officers. We have a stable civilian workforce, which supports our uniform and plainclothes officers. There can be no further cuts to the civilian workforce, as I mentioned last week, if we are to remain a full-service police department. Our department cares about the city and takes great pride in keeping it safe and crime-free. Recent events on a national scale has demonstrated the professionalism and the expertise of our officers. We will continue to work and train so that this department, in my opinion, remains the best municipality in the state. Now, I would like to announce a new program, which is called CARE. One of the programs that was very popular when I was in Front Royal was, it was a senior checkup on program, which was on my to-do list. And one of our residents, Catherine Tunis, had called me about it and asked if I was familiar with a program like that. Told her I was, and that it was on my to-do list, and I would get it on our agenda this The storm last year and the storm this year has pointed out to us that we have a lot of senior residents and people with some disabilities that live alone and could use some help. And this program is directed at residents who live alone and need special needs or just need to be checked on each day. The program, as I said, is similar to one in Warren County, Virginia, when I was the police chief in Front Royal. And the recent events, and especially Pepco outages, has led me to announce this program tonight. Residents who need to be checked on will register with the police department. They will call us each day between 12:00 PM and 5:00 PM. If they don't call, we will then call them. If they do not answer, we'll then send a patrol officer to check on their welfare. Now, this program is designed to protect those that are in need, bring a sense of peace to those friends and relatives who care or are not close enough to check on them each day. CARE is another way we can give back to the community and take care of those in need. And I'm really excited about this program, which will start with the press release, which will, excuse me, which will go out in the morning. Corporal Cynthia Conrad can be reached at 301-891-7140, and you can register with Cindy for this program, which she'll be administering for us. I'm excited about it. I think, especially after the last storm, I think it's very important to look out for those that do have needs. Our next report is, was requested. It's a little late, and it's a little late because it took a little while for us to get all the mechanics in our license plate reader to work. If you look at the numbers now, it's, it's working rather well. We have three automated license plate readers. One was obtained through the State Law Enforcement Technology Grant. Another one was obtained through the National Capital Region Urban Area Security Initiative Grant, which is managed by Arlington County Police for COD. In November 2010, we were notified that there was a third device available to... In November two thousand ten, we were notified that there was a third device available to us, which we've got. I might add, we've gotten all three devices and haven't spent a penny, so that's obviously a win for the city of Tacoma Park. One of our units is assigned to our tactical enforcement unit, which is our plainclothes unit. A second one is issued to our department traffic officer, which has been the most used of the three units. And the third one is now available by patrol officers as we train them, more of them will use it. I provided you with statistical data that runs from March two thousand ten through January two thousand eleven. I won't go through the numbers again, other than just explain. A tag hit is where we get a hit that says it's either a suspended tag, insurance problem, the driver of this car is wanted, or suspended, or has some issue. As a result of these nine hundred and twenty-nine hits we got, we've issued three hundred and sixty-nine traffic citations, recovered three stolen vehicles, issued eleven parking violations, caught two wanted subjects, and recovered three stolen tags. It's in use generally Monday through Friday, and then used on the weekend by patrol and by RTU people when they work. As directed by the city council, the police department currently deletes all data at the end of the work shift. This practice has now proved to be an obstacle to interjurisdictional cooperation, which I know is very important to the council. We receive requests from other jurisdictions on vehicles and have been unable to provide the requested assistance. The Maryland State Fusion Center provides the department with reports on homeland security and domestic terrorism seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You had attached to your packet tonight a little bit about the Fusion Centers. The Maryland Fusion Center operates under very strict rules and guidelines to guarantee the security of intelligence information. Sharing intelligence is a two-way street, which we are not doing at this time. We've received data from other agencies, which has assisted us in closing cases. This current lack of cooperation and failure to share information puts the police department at a disadvantage in doing its job and potentially puts officers at risk. I believe the sharing of the information can be accomplished without compromising our residents' privacy. I am requesting permission tonight to share the department's data with the Maryland State Fusion Center, which has strict guidelines, which I'm aware of, and have briefed the city manager on, which I believe would meet the needs and the concerns of our community. And with that, I'm open for questions. I apologize for my hoarseness. We're sitting under an air condition for six hours today.
And then having you out in the rain.
Then we ran in the rain.
I think, first, I'd like to see if we can get the question about the Fusion Center out of the way, so if we will have other questions, but there's been the request by the chief to retain the data and have the policies in place on sharing the information of the Fusion Center. Do people have comments on that? Councilmember Clay?
So the I saw the Fusion Fusion Center piece, I read this, but that's not in here, is it? The comments, are there comments on the Fusion Center, and what page is that on?
That was a part of your, you should, did they get that?
Yes.
It's the separate agenda item one, blue sheet. No, there's a different blue sheet. There's is the requests.
So I got this?
Nope.
That's right here.
Blue sheet one.
All right, good. It's on the bottom of the pile. Okay, so so now, we collect the data as we go through and do the tags, and we eliminate it at the end of the day, is that right?
Correct.
End of the, okay, at the end of the shift. So what is it that the other jurisdictions are asking us for? And how is it, how long are you suggesting that we save data? What would happen to it if we gave it to other entities? It seems like we would lose control over it. And how would you, you know, sort of protect the residents and their privacy?
Okay. What I would like to see us do is keep the data for thirty days. The data we give to the state, we could still delete, because it would then go to the state and be in their database. The state has strict guidelines on how they do this, and it is confidential, but I have been briefed on it, how they take the information, where it goes. For someone to get any data that goes to the state, they have to make a specific request, what it's for, what they're looking for. They can't just look at a hundred tags, they have to have a specific information they're looking for. We would keep our data. The type of request we get is, I'll give you an example. We had a robbery last year where we checked DC's license plate reader file, and we were able to get information, which helped us close the case. You'd make a specific request. We wouldn't give them all our data. You'd have to make a specific request to us for our data to look at it. And we would look back in the file and see if we had that tag number, did it come up, and the date and time it came up. So we wouldn't just give them the file to go through. It would have to be a specific request for a specific tag number.
So we would hold the data, and we would hold it for thirty days, and they would make a request of us, and then we would review that data?
And it may not happen, we may not get any requests during that thirty days.
Right. So what goes to the, we already send some data to the state?
No, we do not send any of the data to the state.
Then I was confused, because I thought you said that we would send data to the state, and they have...
We would send data. This would be, that's two separate issues I'm looking at.
Okay.
Right now, we get the data, we delete it at the end of the shift. I'd like to hold it for thirty days in case there's a request that comes up on a crime that just occurred. We could specifically go back and look at the data we had. It's not going to happen very often, because we don't get that many requests, but I'd hate to see where someone had a homicide or something, and we may have had that data in our file.
So when we send the data to the state, you're only talking about the specific response to the information request? You're not talking about sending them our files?
No, I'm sending them our files.
Okay. In what circumstances would we send them the files?
We would send all the data we are obtaining now to them. It's under specific guidelines that they release it, but they would get all our data, because what they're looking at is the big picture. With all the data, it may not fall into anything we're doing, it may fall into a domestic terrorism case, criminal intelligence case. It'd be no really different than the data they have on all the tag numbers and everything else they're getting now.
Sure. But you remember that we don't trust them, because they came in spite on us and all of our people who are...
That was the Maryland State Police. We're talking about a Maryland Fusion Center, which meets strict guidelines. I've reviewed these guidelines, and they're some of the strictest I've ever seen.
Okay, so you're talking about giving the data to the Fusion Center, which is, it makes it really clear, though, that the Fusion Center is owned, versus say, what the Fusion Center is and what the Fusion Center isn't.
Yeah.
And it's here, that what the Fusion Center is not, on page sixty-four, is not owned by the federal government. Fusion Centers are owned and operated by the state and local entities with support from the federal government. Aren't the Maryland State Police part of the state of Maryland?
No.
Okay. Well, I don't mind holding onto the data for thirty days, but I think we'd want to talk a little bit more about what happens when we give the data to the state, because I think there are a lot of residents in Tacoma Park who are still concerned about the the state. And maybe we could make that as a decision administration by administration. Maybe we trust this administration in a way that we didn't trust the other administration, or maybe we didn't, but we certainly got a fair number of comments on it, and we should probably, I think, have some discussion about that, where we provide the public an opportunity to comment on it at least.
Councilmember Wright?
I I would suggest this path forward, although I am generally comfortable with the first request, which is not the data dump to the state, but DC comes to us and says, we're looking for this tag, we're wondering if it was in this area, can you check? I'm generally okay with that concept, but what I would propose is that we have in writing specifically what would happen with the data in both cases, and understand, maybe it's all on here in the Fusion Center, but really have a clearly articulated what the Fusion Center is, who controls the data, what it would be used for, and be able to publicize that and have a public hearing on this issue. Because a lot of residents were concerned about this, I feel like this would be a big policy change, and I think it would prove us to get full public input on on that topic, and then make a decision about what it is we we want to do going forward.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm trying to get a handle on what this Fusion Center is. I see the SLTT acronym, which is State, Local, Tribal, and Territorial, right? And then it looks like a partnership with with the federal government. And it says, and it combines terror, anti-terrorism or terrorism issues and criminality, criminal activity. So it's something, it's like a hybrid and a progression of sorts of data gathering. And I know that there's, data is easier and easier to gather and and combine. So I'm I'm kind of looking for more information, too. The thirty days seems reasonable. I agree with Councilmember Wright in that if somebody asks us for something, I'm okay with that, but to upload all the data, I'd like to know more.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. I think what I hear from my colleagues is a little bit of confusion on the Fusion Center, and so it might be helpful to have a little bit more time and maybe some more information on the Fusion Center and what they're, how that operates. But yeah, I would certainly support retaining the data for thirty days. I would support, you know, us scanning the data for any specific requests of specific tag numbers. And I would also support maybe a broader discussion of this before we decide on the on the more specific requests for the passing of the data to the Fusion Center.
Councilmember Schultz?
I certainly have no problem with the idea of keeping our our local data on file for thirty days so that we can mutually benefit each other within the metropolitan area. That just seems practical to me. I think in reading this article on the Fusion Center, the one of the things that popped out is is that it stresses the fact that most of the terrorism that we've been concerned about since nine eleven is now more domestically derived than it is from abroad. And when you think about what what happened in Tucson, and then at prior to that, in Fort Hood in Texas, and some of these other arrests, a guy just a couple days ago was arrested getting ready to try and blow up some, what, George Bush's residence. I mean, it seems laughable on the surface, but who knows? I mean, that, it's important that if if these Fusion Centers are capable of providing, you know, of enabling information to flow up and down and crosswise to this whole security apparatus we have in the United States, it seems like it's a good idea, but I'm certainly in concert here with other members. I think it's a it's a good idea for us to spend a little time understanding in more depth about the Fusion Center.
Councilmember Smith?
Well, everything's been said, but not everyone has said it, so...
So you're just saying me too?
So I'm going to say me, too. Let's have a public hearing, gather some more information.
Could I just say something? We have more information, and we'll have to, I'll have to discuss it. Some of it, I have the specific program, and I can explain. I haven't done it publicly tonight, because some of it is considered restricted information that I'm not allowed to share, at least not in a public setting. So we'll get some interpretation of what I can share and what I can't. I think once I share what I know, which I can't say right now, I think you'd be comfortable with it, because the main thing it addresses is the concerns of private citizens, which I know is a big issue here in Tacoma Park. And I wouldn't come to you tonight with it if I didn't think I had a chance of selling it to you, but let us do some checking on what I can share for another briefing. But the thirty days would definitely help us.
And I think that would be helpful, because it's interesting to me that none of us seems to have a problem with retaining the data for thirty days. Yes, yet when we first started the program, we had concerns about that, and therefore you didn't retain the data. So as as we attain a comfort level with how the program will operate and what the protections are, it seems that we move toward making data more available, more widely. And so if that pattern holds, it may be that the information that you present will be helpful in getting us to that comfort level. Councilmember Wright, you have another comment?
I just wanted to follow up. You know, I I said I was generally supportive of the idea, but would not want to make a final decision on either of the things till we have the public hearing. I think it's very important that we make it a very standout agenda item, that we're thinking about changing this. You know, I think that, if I recall correctly, the reason we were concerned about the thirty days before was because under the Patriot Act, that means that the federal government could decide to seize all of that data at any time, and there was concern, and not ask for individual records. And there were, people had concern about that, that by storing it, we then exposed ourselves to having to obligate ourselves to provide that information to the federal government. And the second thing is, I think people are not only concerned about their general privacy, there's a concern, I mean, let's remember what this does, right? This this technology identified nine hundred and twenty-nine hits, but it's recording every single license plate that drives by a particular location. And what people are concerned about is that feeling like that is generally could be a violation of civil rights to record and then share that information broadly with the government about totally innocent people and where they're driving and at what time of day. And so that's the, that's a big concern, and I think that's why, again, reiterate, we need to have the public hearing.
And Chief, could you just remind us, because my, as Councilmember Wright was speaking, I had a recollection about how this works, and it may be incorrect. Does the, does the system retain the information on all the vehicles that it reads, or just the hits?
All the tags.
All of them.
It reads it correctly, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Clay, you have another comment?
I don't think I was concerned with the thirty days the first time around, but I am more concerned about the sort of broad sharing of the of the data, but I'm not, I'm not close to it. I think my point is that we got a lot of citizen comment on it the last time, and so I do, we just want to give people that opportunity.
Okay. So we will...
Just turn it on.
Oh, sorry.
We will set that up as soon as we can. Okay, so we all set on that, on those items now? We can go to the more more general questions. Chief, I just have two questions, and I'll start, since I usually go last, I'll start. If you can just, if you can just remind folks, because I know people get confused, the difference in the definition of larceny, robbery, and burglary?
Larceny, someone breaks into your car, takes an item from your car, okay? That's larceny. Burglary, you break into a house by force and enter it. Whether you're home or not home is burglary. Robbery is when you use a weapon and threaten somebody to take money or some property from them. That's the simple, easiest way to explain it, okay?
Aggravated assault?
That's word. It could be on a punch in the face, it could be a knife wound, gunshot wound.
So you can have burglary and robbery if somebody breaks into a house and then threatens somebody with a with a weapon?
Well, if they broke it, you could have what what is called home invasion robbery, where they break into a house and then rob the people, or stuff, so you can have both there.
Okay. And then my second question is, I want to make sure that I get, I'll revert for a second and just say, thank you for providing all of this information in this report, that it's very helpful, and we're all very appreciative of the efforts that you and the department have made in the last few years in getting to where we are now, where we have a much better trend in the closing of cases and the addressing of public safety concerns. And I think there's a wider comfort level across the community in feeling safety in Tacoma Park and in recognizing the the abilities that are brought forth in the department in this city every day to make everybody not only feel safer, but be safer. And we recognize that, and every time you come before us, we praise the department, and I want to continue to do that and to recognize that, and to say that having these annual reports is very helpful in understanding what the efforts are in the in the community and making this available so that people know. And along those lines, there have been questions lately that I've gotten as I've attended various sessions of the Budget Game, where people have had questions about the the level of police service that we provide in the city, and explanations that we're the only full-service municipal police department in the county, and therefore we get a rebate from the county for the police services that we provide. There have been people who say, well, what if we just give back the detective ability to the county? What if we just turn over police services to the county? And I wondered if you could just briefly explain why it is that we get the rebate and nobody else does, and what level of service the county, what you think the county would provide if we turned it over to the county? You don't have to go into great detail, but just a quick sense, because that question comes up.
We, as a full-service department, we handle all crimes that occur here in the city. That means any crime that's reported, we handle, we investigate. Our detectives, because we have our own detectives, handle all the follow-up investigations, and they're a central part. Gathersburg, to give an example, why those departments, Gathersburg at any time can pull off the chart and not answer calls in the Gathersburg city, which they did quite often for training purposes. They don't have detectives, they don't have, they don't handle most of the crimes, all the... All the detective work is done by Montgomery County. In Rockville, there's a little bit higher level of service, but they do not handle any major crimes there, they handle property crimes. All the person crimes are handled by Montgomery County. And like, they don't have to answer calls if they don't want to. Montgomery County only comes into Tacoma Park under a mutual aid when we request assistance, which over the last four years that I've been here, maybe two or three times we've requested under mutual aid, we needed their assistance because we ran out of cars. But we handle all our calls for service, we do all our follow-up investigations, we handle, we submit to the state all the reports that Montgomery County would have to submit as a full-service department. If we go away from that, we would lose the entire rebate. We would get a half over a third of it because we get the full rebate and you can ask your fellow legislators in Rockville and Gathersburg, they're very jealous of the fact that we have it, but they haven't committed to a full-service department as you have. And in the service, I mean, I worked in the county for 26 years and as I joke about, we left Tacoma Park alone. We, we didn't worry about Tacoma Park, they were not our issue. And, you know, we had very little contact because they basically operated down here and did all their stuff. Obviously, there's contact, but not like it is in Rockville and Gathersburg. Rockville and Gathersburg were very closely with the county because they don't do all their, all the things that a regular, normal police department does. The people out in this audience that are here tonight are full-service, perform all those services and I think do a darn good job at it, as shown by these statistics over the last four years and some of our recent events, we're able to handle those crimes. What our citizens get, which they don't sometimes realize, Montgomery County now basically takes most reports over the phone. Other than maybe a burglary, robbery or an assault, something in progress, they'll respond to. Majority of the crimes that would occur in Tacoma Park would be over the phone. Secondly, we follow up all our cases. If we get like, we get the thefts from autos, which are misdemeanors, but we had a series of them last year. County wouldn't be, have a detective assigned to them. We had a detective assigned to those type of crimes. We're able to do things that the other smaller municipalities don't do because we are a full-service department. And I think that the numbers speak for themselves with the amount of arrests we've made over the last four years, especially in closing major crimes.
You were sharing with me in the car back from Annapolis that during the, the most recent storm where everybody was stranded on the road for up to seven-hour commutes home, that basically the county stopped responding?
County only responded to a personal injury accidents or a fire in progress. And I think the best example, which I told you that I'd love to share with the council is, we had a resident in Germantown call our police station because we actually answered the phone and wanted us to call the county to give them the information. There was a woman stranded out on Great Seneca Highway with her baby and she was scared and upset and she needed help. The county lines, as you know, really got backed up and they weren't being answered where obviously we were answering our phone lines all night. And we were able to make the contact for them, but we actually called the county for them. When our residents called, we didn't reduce any service during the storm. We never have and most likely never will. We'll handle what comes into us. That's a big advantage. And I, as one who was also stuck, just trying to drive to Silver Spring to spend the night, took two hours, so I got to listen to the county radio and all the calls they weren't taking as I'm sitting there, why aren't you doing something about this? Were our guys, and I'll give you an example of what we did. One of our officers, when we got a call and one of them resulted in a complaint, unfortunately I talked to that person, so I know what the complaint was. We had a, we had a traffic jam on Philadelphia Avenue during the height of the storm for about an hour. We couldn't get a car up there because we were tied up on wires down and everything else. One of our officers parked his car and walked a half a mile up the street, took care of the situation on foot. My brothers and sisters in Montgomery County do a good job, but you're not going to get that in the county. That's not part of what you get in a small department. These officers that sit out here tonight are here to let you know how much they believe in what we're doing. They care about it. It's like the burglaries right now. That's our goal this year. We're going to reduce them. Whatever it takes, we will get them reduced because we take it personal. There's four patrol shifts. Nobody wants their shift to be hit on day work now because, one, they have to hear from me, they don't want to see me about it. There's pressure on them from their sergeant, from me, the lieutenant, the captain, because that's the way we work here. We want to make it a safer place to be. There's many advantages, I could go on, but I, we don't have time tonight, which you get with a full-service municipal department that gets a rebate.
And if we were to.
However reduced it is.
But if, just, just to again ask the question that a number of people have asked and we've, I've provided the answer, other people have provided the answer, but still getting the question. Gee, if we give back the detective service, the detective division to the county and then that reduces our costs? And, and my answer to them is, no. That takes away all of the rebate and maybe you've taken away, say, $500,000 or $750,000 or whatever the figure is in, in costs, but you lose the $2.5 million in rebate and the net loss is like a million and a half or more dollars if you do that.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on the record with collaboration from you so that that answer can stand. I appreciate it. And again, I thank you and all the members of the department and there's about a third of the department here tonight. And I don't remember another time when we've had a third of the police department here. I assume there's people out on the street, but there is. I really appreciate seeing everybody here and just want you to know that we all really appreciate the outstanding job that you do. I don't know what order the lights came on, so I'll say Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure to what I should thank. Your selection of me as first, since you didn't know, but I appreciate it. And I thank you for the, the description and the distinction you make between the Tacoma Park police officers and the Montgomery County. I know that Montgomery County is a highly professional police department and, and I guess that is a good lead-in to, to the first comment I wanted to make. And I wanted to thank you and the, and the officers and civilian personnel of the police department for the incredible progress that's been made over the years since you've come here to a higher level of professionalism. I really have been impressed and I get a lot of feedback from the community. You know, there's not always positive feedback, but a, a lot of recognition in the community that, that the department is, is much improved over the years and is, is become much, much more respected in the community for its professionalism and, and the real attention to the issues that concern the community and I thank you for that. I think, you know, there are some areas where I'd still like to see improvement and I, I don't think they're a surprise to you, I think you also want to see the improvement, the coordination with some of our neighboring jurisdictions. As you know, it's better with some and, and room for improvement with others and I trust that you're continuing to address that. The, I did want to make a comment, you know, there's been several, as you said, high-profile incidents recently, but there was one that I did want to compliment the officer, officers on their judgment and that was the pursuit of the perpetrators for the robberies that we've been having at the gas stations along New Hampshire Avenue. I know that was a, a difficult call on whether to pursue those individuals and I, I really appreciate the fact that, that the officers made the decision to, to pursue that vehicle and, and it was fortunate that it led to the arrests. But that was a, a very large problem, as you know, within the city. And I know it was a difficult decision, I think they made the, the right decision. The other thing I wanted to, well, two things. One, I wanted to mention that I, I have no interest in turning over any of the police services to the county. I think the city, the residents of Tacoma Park receive much better service than could be expected from Montgomery County in any of the different areas, I think. And that isn't to denigrate in any way the Montgomery County Department, but as you know, being local and with the concentration of officers in, in this area and knowing the community, we can expect and we do receive better service than they would be able to provide. And then lastly, I would just like to ask that as we've seen great improvements in the department over the past few years, I would like to see you put some additional time and energy into coordinating with our recreation department on how we can reach out to some of the young people who are on the path to wrong. I know that you've done some of that, but I would like to see a concentrated program of how we can help to divert them from their, the bad paths that they're on and, and what resources you might need from this council to help to maybe not have to worry about law enforcement, but, but prevention of future crimes. And I thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
Thanks for putting the report together. I noticed that there was a lot of crime in Ward Two relative to the other wards, that was interesting this year. We only got beat out by Ward Six. And I wonder if, it's probably not something to cheer about, but.
Maybe it's that end of the diet.
Ward Three be trapped.
Okay. So I wonder if that has a lot to do with the New Hampshire Avenue corridor activity. And the other thing that I wanted to say was that, I was at the Folk Festival meeting last night and one of the, one of our folks commented that sometimes they feel like, gosh, I don't want to get another report from the, what's his name, Andrew, who's your crime analyst?
Good chair.
Good chair. That's telling me about all the crime going on and I said, yeah, but what about all the notices that you get about all the people that they've caught? And he said, well, that's really cool, but sometimes I get depressed. And he said, except that it's really great when I get information that I could do something about and the gas station robberies was a really good example of information that we got, that we could take in action on and could actually like, okay, this is happening, it's really obvious why this is happening if I don't leave my keys in the ignition of my car running or my purse in the front seat. I don't think he has a purse, but then, you know, I won't, I won't have trouble with that. So I thought that was, that was interesting and a little conversation ensued as people are reading the crime reports there. Some of them are, are down about the, you know, crime in the city, but they're clearly using the information to change their behavior and the way that they act. And so I thought that was interesting.
Well, two things. One, New Hampshire Avenue is the reason we're up on number two on the crime hit list. What we've tried to do, if you remember, we had reached a point with Kylene, we were moving up with the intelligence information and when she left, obviously it was a void for like six months. And what Andrew's doing, the state, the state is giving us a lot of really good training and we were able to, he's upgraded a lot of our databases, he's upgrading the type of reports that we're going, as you get more into the job and more experienced, you provide better products and you're going to see even better products as we get into, hopefully we won't have a lot of crime rate. One of the things that, that I've discussed with the city manager is, we put out a lot of information. And one of the disadvantages of putting information out, your critics get to see the good and the bad. I'm willing to take the good with the bad because I think it's important to give the information to the community. I think in the long run, and I think you would agree with me, the more information out makes people have the intelligence and awareness. They don't always like what they hear because I can tell you, Kathy gets the negative feedback that nobody else here sees, which she shares with me. Because there are a lot of people that do get upset when things happen and that's to be expected. I mean, if we had a crime-free community, I would be working somewhere else because I'd have the, the answer and the formula and I know I don't have it. But, and they would go right with me too because we'd have something special. But we put out the good with the bad, it opens you up for criticism and I've taken it and we'll keep doing it. I believe you go out front and discuss stuff. I think recently it worked in our advantage with the, with the bank robbery because we spoke to the community, we answered the questions, we didn't say no comment or that we hid behind a report. Anything we put out, I'm willing to come and talk about it at any meeting as every one of you know. And we have nothing to hide from. When we do something wrong and when we're right, we're going to brag about it.
Yeah, I don't think people were critical. I, I think just level of crime sometimes in the area, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of crime that's been going on. I think though, people were really appreciative of the information that they could take action on and they particularly commented that they thought that this, this police chief was very good about talking about the things that the department does well and they actually liked that.
Good. Hopefully we'll talk more positive than negative.
Councilmember Wright?
I want to first thank all the officers that are here and the civilians, Kathy and Andrew. You know, we get emails from Kathy and Andrew at all different hours of the night. I haven't quite figured out what shift schedule you have them on in terms of responding to those, those requests to put out information, but greatly appreciated. I, I agree with you. I mean, I think it's better to put out more than less, you know, it does create a sense that there's things going on and, but I, I think that's better for people. You know, I looked at the crime data statistics in my mother-in-law's neighborhood in Adams Morgan and they're not drastically different from the statistics here, but she doesn't get, doesn't have information on her listserv about, with the level of detail and information that we get. And I, I think in aggregate, it's, it's better off in the long run. You know, I want to definitely thank the officers, there's been some high-profile, very dangerous events that have gone on and thank you to you all for putting your lives on the line every day to protect us, I greatly appreciate it. In terms of the report, wonderful, I found it very helpful, had a couple of suggestions I think that might be helpful. One is, in the past, we've had, we've been able to see kind of year-over-year trends. You know, you had, you had some graphs that kind of projected out and let us look at the different types of crime over the year. And I think that's helpful because it lets us see even that the trend is not just that it went down this year, but it's gone down consistently and, and compare that to, yes, burglaries have gone up this year, but in aggregate, they're down significantly over the last five years. I think it would be nice to project this sort of thing on the, on the screen when we're talking about it so that the public watching and the public in the audience, it would be nice for them to be able to see the graphs. I would like to see data, and it goes to, I think, the line of question that Bruce had, around closure rates for us versus Montgomery County, particularly in the Silver Spring area, which I think is most analogous. And I think you'd see that we'd probably do a better job at that. And that would give people a very concrete sense of, of the, what they're getting for their money as well as response times, because I think response times are also much better within Tacoma Park. And I'm sure the county, I know we track those things, I'm sure the county tracks them as well. It would be, would be good to get a sense of that. You know, some of that's because of the can-do type of officers we have, but some of it is the reality that on a per square mile basis, we probably have more officers than big chunks of the county. Then the last thing is I, I have a question. You know, we've been debating a lot about speed camera use and one of the uses of those funds can be for public safety. And so I'd be curious if I said to you, Chief, you could have an additional $300,000, what you, how you would spend that to keep the, the city safer?
Are you saying three, is it additional $300,000 or $300,000 within my.
Chief, do you. It's additional $300,000 to what your budget currently is.
Well, the first thing I would ask for would be a full-time community service officer who could work on some of the gang issues Councilman Siemens brought up. It's a position I have talked about, but because of budget concerns, I have not raised it since I think the first year. That would be $100,000 there. I probably want to add an additional gang officer. We have, and I will be briefing you on it, but the gang situation and what we've been able to accomplish working with Montgomery County has been phenomenal already. So I wouldn't mind having an additional gang officer and that would be $200,000. And I'd probably take the other $100,000 to upgrade some of our equipment and communications, which is coming up, because we do have some expenses for radio system that we're, we're working on right now. So I would use that to do the upgrades to our technology, which would be $100,000. That's how I'd use it.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
I'll thank all of you guys. You're phenomenal, you did a great job, you're doing a great job and it just brings a lot of pleasure and sense of safety and accomplishment on everybody's part, knowing that you're working for them. So thank you all. I'm going to dig down a little bit, try not to get too, too much into weeds as they say. What's the difference between Part One and Part Two crimes? I see that we had 652 Part One crimes in the city last year. What are Part Two crimes?
Part Two would be misdemeanor crimes, disorderly conduct, drinking in public, crimes like that.
Okay. Now I'm going to go to, oh, and although I like PowerPoint, I'm glad this wasn't a PowerPoint. I just got to say.
He doesn't like PowerPoint.
I don't like, I don't, actually, you're right, Terry, I don't like PowerPoint. So I'm glad to have it in paper. And I'll, I'll try to.
I wasn't saying either or, I was saying both. We could have this and people. We could have this and people, people out there have no idea what you're looking at.
I know.
Unless they put it up on the screen on their computer while they're watching.
You can get this done.
I've not seen any Boy Scouts with computers.
Oh, they may have them.
Not right now, they don't.
They might have their iPads back there.
Well, before we get too much further in that direction, I'd like to go jump to the pie charts a little bit. And the, I'm curious about the drug, drug offenses pie charts. There are three of them. And although I find the, the trends last year, this year interesting, and to some extent the drug offenses fit those trends and some maybe they don't. All drug offenses, the Tacoma Park, Tacoma Parkians, let's see, went from 14% to 27%, so almost double. And Tacoma Parkian, and marijuana went from 18 to 32, which is getting close to double. And alcohol went from, either DWI or liquor law, went from about 66 last year to 48 this year. So it decreased considerably. So it looks like there's more marijuana arrests.
That follows the national trend.
Okay. And tell me about the marijuana arrests. How does that, oh, first of all, how many, are there numbers for, for, and are these, I guess I'm back to my Part One and Part Two. Are these a combination of Part One and Part Two?
No, these are Part One offenses.
Part One?
Yeah, drug offenses, Part One.
Okay. But alcohol's in there, drug arrests?
These charts were what you all had requested last year.
Yep.
We'd done them the year before, but because we didn't have a crime ass last year, I couldn't get it to you.
Okay. I'm just trying to educate myself. I'm not, okay? So drug offenses are Part One. So they fall within the 635. But they're not listed in the earlier part where, 652, rather, like in the...
Andrew, am I wrong?
They're Part Two.
They're Part Two. Excuse me, I'm wrong.
Okay. I thought maybe they were. What are rough numbers on, on the Part Two crimes we have?
I could break, I could break that down for you.
Just, I mean, if it's 652, Part One, is it 100, Part Two, or 600, Part Two?
I would say it's, it's going to be more.
A thousand?
It's one through more serious crimes, and then everything else falls into the Part Two category. So you're going to have a lot more Part Two crimes.
Okay. I'm curious, I'm curious about the Part Two arrests, and I'm curious about how, what the kind of rationale for marijuana arrests is? Like, how do you go? How, well, how do you go about it? Like, what happens? Is it, is it, is it mostly cars? People stopped in cars and the, and the officer smells pot? Or is it mostly in conjunction with cocaine? Or it looks like the cocaine percentages here are quite small, so...
Majority of our drug arrests are made as a result of traffic stops where we stop a car for an offense, whether it's a traffic offense or it's a suspicious vehicle. Probable cause would lead to a search in the vehicle, or they may be arrested for a traffic offense and a search incidental to arrest reveals drugs. If you look at the numbers, most of the people we have arrested for drugs are criminals. And we find most of them, as you can see from the others, they're from outside Tacoma Park, have come here most likely to get in trouble, which leads to the stop, which leads to the eventual arrest.
Except for drugs where the, the, it is still almost 75% from out of town.
Correct.
But last year it was much more. It was 86%. So more Tacoma Parkians are being arrested for drug offenses, twice as many are being arrested.
And I explained that that is a result of more gang arrests has resulted in drugs.
Okay. So, and just very briefly, I know that gangs are something high on your priority list. When, when you're talking about gang arrests, does, how often is that, does that overlap or intersect with, with drug dealing or drug activity and that sort of thing? Is that like a major part of gang activity, or is it...
That is a major part of gang activity. We're finding more and more crimes have a gang-related issue right now in Tacoma Park.
Okay. More and more gang-related crimes.
Correct.
And most gang-related crimes, can I say most are drug-related?
No.
Okay. That's...
But drug-related, more and more drug arrests have been made as a result of gang-related crime. Correct. That is correct.
Right. But gangs are also responsible for Part One crimes?
Robberies, burglaries, assaults. They're responsible in all those areas now. And the number continues to grow on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me sketch out, it gives me a better understanding. Thank you all.
Councilmember Schults?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to add my thanks to the work that you do, all of you. I've been especially appreciative of the public meetings that you and your officers have had around Tacoma Park and the public education activities that don't be, you know, refuse to be a victim and information that goes out on the lists about how to protect yourself in specific situations and so on. I think that's very helpful to the community. I do hear a lot of concern about crime, even though it is down. Of course, I always mention that crime is down. You know, not everyone remembers that it's down when they're thinking about it. But I think you're on the, you're still on the right approach to let people know what's going on. I think that's, that's really essential. I have a specific question in the report, and I want you to talk a little bit about this particular incident because I think people in Ward Five were quite concerned about it. It's, there was a rape in the city, and it was in Ward Five. And that was the one in Sligo Creek.
Okay.
Yeah. I wondered if you'd talk a little bit about what happened and was the perpetrator caught? And how were they caught? Because I think it's useful for the public to hear that.
The, as you know, the rape occurred in Sligo Creek Park, occurred after it was in the rainy day, similar to today. We had a lookout. The victim did not get a good, really never saw his face, but could give us a pretty good description. On that night, Detective Charlie Holtzle spotted someone that met the description. He had muddy shoes, mud on his pants, over in front of the liquor store on New Hampshire Avenue, sitting down. He approached him, asked him if he could talk with him. The gentleman cooperated. He cooperated to the point they allowed us to take a picture of him. He allowed us to get DNA from him, which he agreed to and consented. So we took all that information and with the picture. Once we began our follow-up investigation, we learned that PG County on the other side of the street had had a similar rate three weeks earlier on the path in the PG side. We provided them with the pictures, told them we were waiting for the DNA to come back. They showed the pictures and they had identified this gentleman as the suspect in their rape. They were able to locate him and arrest him. We then asked for an expedited lab analysis, and as expedited as you can get, we got, it took a little while, but we got a complete hit on our DNA. And then we placed our charges, and this gentleman will probably never see daylight again.
And I want to thank you for that work. And I want the community to know that because our officers are good at their jobs, they're able to make those kinds of, make those kinds of closures, make those kinds of arrests.
That's what happens when you have your own detective section and you have your entire detective section respond on a crime as important as rape. And that night, every resource we had was at there. And I think that's what led to the arrest, along with some obviously good police work.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't also add in my thanks and appreciation. My three, four, or five years sitting on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, plus my recent term here in the city council, has given me a much, much greater wisdom on what it is that the police officers are up against on a daily basis, how complicated the job is, and how inter-jurisdictional it is. Tacoma Park's really a small place when it comes to crime geographically, and it's obvious that to do, to do a job well, there's just got to be all kinds of cross, cross-boundary lines cooperation, or else so many of these things could never be solved. And I, I see, I gather that that's something that's increasing. There's an increasing amount of that kind of cooperation. So, but you guys have been doing a good job. And I, I hear almost no complaints in my ward about police work. I hear concerns about crime, but that's, that's to be expected. We're all concerned about it. And there's a great deal of pride, I think, about, I know that there was, I wouldn't say I think, with regard to the, the whole handling of the Capital One Bank hostage case. I guess it was last month now, in December, or January, whenever.
Seems like yesterday to me.
I can imagine it does. I would strongly, I agree that it is important to publish and get out this information because if you didn't, I would ask you to do so. Because I think the only way to get citizens to cooperate, or not the only way, but one of the best ways to get them to cooperate and report suspicious activity is for them to realize that this is not a rural place where there's no crime. And if we didn't keep this information in front of our citizens, a lot of people would say, well, you know, I haven't seen any rapes, I haven't heard of anybody getting murdered recently. What's the big deal? And I think we have to, it's helpful to, for people to understand that we live in a very urban area, and crime's a fact of life, and we can't pretend that it's not going on. And that's one of the way, incentives to give people the motivation to call up when they see suspicious activity. With regard to the report itself, I was wondering if you can comment, I realize that Ward Six has the most crime, but in terms of, if you have this in your head, and you may not, in terms of the trends within the ward over the last, I don't know, year or two or three, because that, that kind of data is not broken down. The data in this report doesn't tell you trends by wards.
I get, Ward Six gets more crime because Ward Six is on the border.
Right.
Of Montgomery County, PG County, and DC, well, not DC so much, but we still get the traffic. You're on the border, we pull over a lot of crime that comes out of Pinch George's County. Most of the drug arrests are traffic stops of people that are coming into the city. I think we proved that our response rate, and we have quite a few cars down in the Langley Park area with Capital One.
Right.
Because that's where we spend a lot of time. Not that we aren't in all the other wards, because we are, but we do a lot of work out in your area. And as a result, a lot more traffic stops are made. There are a lot more people that decide to come across the street into our two shopping centers, and we have conversation. We get a lot more calls on people that are floating around in that area. The businesses are good at calling. As a result, there is a lot more happening, just like, same way with Kyleen's ward. It's right on the border. A lot of the stuff comes down the New Hampshire corridor, it comes into that area, which makes you a target for crime. The good news is we get a lot of them before they ever get out of the car because we stop them for whatever reason we have. Generally, it's traffic. That's where the license plate reader comes, because Michelle Holmes, our traffic officer, she works New Hampshire Avenue every day. And it's amazing the number of cars that come up there that have suspended tags, revoked tags, no insurance. And it's someone from outside the city, which the numbers obviously point out. So we are stopping more people. The trend will continue. I don't look for the trend to come down because unfortunately, as you can see from our crime, it's not our residents. Our residents aren't committing crime. It's people that come into the city, and unfortunately for you, they're all coming in that New Hampshire University Boulevard.
So in effect, if, if you could, and I know you can't, carve out those stop, those vehicle stops from, from this data, you, you might get a better comparison of Ward Six to the rest of the, rest of the city. Because obviously the, maybe the case could be made that the, the crime that occurs, that occurs in the residential area is probably maybe neither greater nor less than it might be in some of the other wards.
Well, if you look at Ward One and you look at Ward Six, most of the people we arrest for crimes are from outside the wards. And that's a given.
Yeah.
What has been unusual is one of the perceptions that I heard for years in Montgomery County, everybody from DC was spilling into Tacoma Park. Well, for the first four years I was here, that wasn't true. It's coming more from PG, Hyattsville, that area. It's changed, as you can see, 11, I think it was 11% went up from DC last year, which is a change in the trend. But I also know from working very closely with Fourth District Commander Missouri, that they're getting killed with crime by juveniles in the Fourth District now. It's just been a major increase over there, and we are getting the spillover from that. Our spillover in Hyattsville matches what Hyattsville's figures would be also.
Now, finally, I guess, as you know, I've already expressed this before, is of my interest in the idea of being able to use, install video cameras in, to kind of keep track of the public sidewalks in the Tacoma Langley corridor. I just, I just think that it would help, help in the arrest of those kind of crimes. I know it's an expensive proposition, the technology's there, and if we could use some of the speed camera money or think about using it for that kind of equipment purchase and installation, I, I'm interested in seeing that, and I hope that's something we can work toward. But I understand it's a budget issue as well. So I'll leave it at that, but that's all I'm going to say.
And if I can, if I can also point out that I perceive it as slightly counter to the direction that we gave earlier on the, on the Fusion Center and the issues about privacy. Councilmember Siemens has one short comment.
Yeah. Councilmember Schultz, just, his questions reminded me of a question I wanted to ask. Which of the wards has the lowest crime rate?
Which of the wards...
I think you know the answer to that.
Which of the wards has the smallest geographic area?
It is also a border ward, it's Ward Four. Thank you.
We'll all stipulate that everybody has the same crime.
Do you have a breakdown of the, where the crimes that are committed by people from Tacoma Park in Tacoma Park live? And by what ward?
We could probably do that with, I can see Andrew's look, but we could do it. We, we take a, it's not something in the computer. We'd have to actually pull the arrest reports and go there and then look at the crimes. But that's something we can look at.
Okay. Thank you all very much. The takeaway we have from this is that we will try and set up a public hearing on the issues that you brought in want direction from us on as soon as we can. And appreciate everybody's attendance here. And I think it's time for us to take a short break. And what I would like to do as I come down from here from the break is I'd like to come down and greet all of the sworn and uns sworn personnel who are here, and thank you for all that you do, and also say hello to the Boy Scouts. So we'll take a short break. And we are now at the only voting item on our agenda. This is a First Lady Ordinance authorizing current year budget amendment number two. City Manager Matthews, do you have a presentation on this one?
Yeah, I will just be very brief. There's obviously a fairly detailed description of all the items covered by the budget amendment in your agenda packet, but just to kind of summarize, general fund revenues would be, would increase by just over $42,000. This is due to the reimbursement from FEMA we got for the February of 2010 snowmageddon. General fund expenditures, while there's a lot of changes within the general fund, overall expenditures would remain unchanged. There would be one item, which is a portion of the Ethan Allen repairs that would be paid for out of the general contingency account. The general contingency account would go down by just about $16,000 and would leave a balance of just under $73,000. Some very minor changes in the special revenue funds. As the council is aware, this is the accounting mechanism we use to track grant-related projects. So there's just very minor tweaks to three projects. And then lastly, the speed camera fund, there's a number of changes that are delineated in the ordinance itself. As the council may recall from last year's budget process, we've been pretty conservative in estimating revenues because we weren't sure at that point what the impact would be of the recent change in state law that raised the threshold for issuance of a citation. So the budget amendment that is before you this evening would increase speed camera fund revenues by about $635,000. And fund expenditures would increase by just over $750,000. As is noted under special consideration, the figures that are before you this evening for the speed camera fund expenditures reflect either work that has already been done to date or was... date, or work that was authorized by the council last week. Obviously, an upcoming agenda item does have to deal with the amount of ADA sidewalk retrofit work. Depending on the council's decisions this evening, there may be a change to this section of the budget amendment at second reading. Only two other quick items, I guess, I just wanted to mention. Back in January, the council had authorized acceptance of bid alternate number one for renovation of the public works facility, which obviously had some costs associated with it. And discussing kind of the timing of expenditures with the contractor, this project will go into next fiscal year, so I don't think an amendment to the current year budget for the project is warranted at this time. We'll obviously continue to track that. One thing I did notice, and my apologies, when the council, before you have first reading, is on the eighth whereas clause on the actual ordinance itself, I think as I went through, looking through this, I had changed it. That reads that there is, that the change for the cultural events coordinator in the marketing brochure for the auditorium, it indicates that there would be a transfer from the general contingency account. In fact, that is not the case. I was able to find another line item in the budget. So as you do first reading, if someone could just amend that one whereas clause to read necessitating a line item transfer to account for these costs, and we'll mark that up on second reading. My apologies for that.
Okay. Would somebody like to move this budget amendment as, with the amended language as proposed by the city manager?
Second amendment.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there council comment? Is there public comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go to our first work session item, which is fiscal year 2011 ADA sidewalk retrofit project.
I can kick it off, and if there's any technical questions, I'll defer to Daryl. At last Tuesday's council meeting, there was a work session about speed camera funds and the use of those monies. One of the items that was discussed by the council at staff's request was what to do with some projects that had been put on hold. And last week, the council did authorize staff to continue design work for the Ritchie Avenue Traffic Calming Project, and to complete new sidewalk design in Ward Six. And we were also authorized to initiate a contract for design services for new sidewalk construction in Ward Two. Due to the lateness of the hour, and I think a desire on the part of the council to have a more in-depth discussion than time would allow last week, one of the issues that did get put on hold is what continued work we should do this fiscal year on ADA sidewalk retrofit work. The original plan, as we talked about back in, I guess it would be late October, Daryl, was we had about $410,000 worth of work that we had still planned to do this fiscal year. There is a breakdown on the blue cover sheet of that $410,000 in terms of both engineering and construction cost. I think Daryl is looking for some direction from the council this evening, so she can direct the contractor accordingly. I believe the work was actually scheduled to start tomorrow. Is that correct, Daryl? So anyway, I think Daryl's here to provide any, you know, technical information the council may want, but we're just looking for some direction as to how to proceed on this one aspect of the speed camera fund for the remainder of this fiscal year.
And there was some information that you shared with me about the, about federal action on ADA compliance?
Yeah, there was, I think, a question, I believe, from Councilmember Wright. He had kindly offered his thoughts on the budget since he was unable to be here last week. And many of you may not have read it, but I did send some information out late this afternoon, providing some information directly from the federal statute about what is required, and also sharing with the council that this is an area where there is kind of proactive enforcement action being taken by the federal government. It is not just complaint-based. And that's been pretty common with ADA, you know, even going back to the employment law side, when the law was actually put into effect back in the 90s. So there are a number of jurisdictions where the federal government, Department of Justice specifically, have gone out and basically had governments enter almost into kind of consent decrees, if you will, of how they were going to address problems relative to sidewalks and ADA compliance. One of the jurisdictions that was impacted by that is Fairfax County, and included in the email that I sent out late this afternoon is some information about what Fairfax County is being required to do as part of its federal compliance efforts. I know one of the questions the council has, and it's a very good question in terms of, how much do you have to do? And I, there's some general guidance in the law, but more than anything, I think what they are looking for is some type of plan, and for that plan to be articulated and adhered to. So I don't know that we're going to be able to offer much more specific guidance in that, but I think, Daryl, from a practical standpoint, I think you mentioned last week, you really can't do much in this area for anything less than $100,000, and that would be pretty minimal work. Is that correct, Daryl?
Well, sure, just immobilize and get your contractor started, and bring on the design and engineers that you need. Best to do significant portions at a time if it's work that's going to be done, rather than chop it up into little pieces, because you have a lot of mobilization and startup costs.
And I had had a question last week about how much we anticipate the ADA work being, and you came up with a figure?
Yeah, Daryl had done some work on this. And Daryl, do you have your copy?
Sure.
I might just let Daryl walk through it, because obviously, there's a lot of caveats anytime you do this type of calculations. I'd rather Daryl sort of disclaim her own work, if you will.
Yes, thank you. Right. What I did was take a look at Tool Design's evaluation and their calculations based on linear feed of sidewalks that they identified with an ADA need. We got a database from them, which identified the sections of sidewalk that they did their survey work on. It included ramps as well as sidewalks. I made a comment earlier in the previous meeting that a lot of the financial aspect of what they proposed related to ramps, which has been a big focus. And our approach has been more holistic. We're doing cross slopes as well as ramps, and actually, we're doing tree protection measures in addition, which come about because of the location of the sidewalks in our area. So our project tends to be a bit broader in scope than just specifically ADA. But based on our run rates, if you will, what we've spent since we started this program in April, we, according to the list of sidewalks that Tool Design has identified, and I subtracted out of it what we've already done, we've completed about 17% of the city's existing sidewalks and made them compliant. And
About how many, what percentage?
Seventeen. Yeah, I would say, you know, roughly in the ballpark of 20%. We're about a fifth of the way there, based on the work that we started in April of last year, and ran through mid-December of, you know, basically from April, April to December was the length of time we've been working. Using those same figures and what we've spent so far, I would anticipate we spend over about $4 million to do all existing city sidewalks to bring them into compliance. You know, probably below $4,500,000. So I would say in that vicinity, in the four to four, four and a half million dollar framework. And, let's see if I have any other numbers here. I mean, I could go into, you know, the linear feed of sidewalk that we think we're included, and how much we've done so far, if you want those kinds of details. But I think that gives you the basic sense of the pot we have, and how much we've done with what we've spent to date.
And so you think we've spent about, about a million dollars?
Just under. I would say in the eight, seven or eight hundred thousand dollar range for the ADA work we've done so far.
That was work in Ward One and Ward Two, right?
Yes, we did Flower Garland area, we did a small amount of work in Holt and Park and Crescent, and then we, we pretty much started the corner of the city in Ward One, and been working our way down the, from the Eastern Avenue border.
So if it was, the figure I had thrown out last week as OG, is that a figure that was reasonable to assign to some, you know, systematic getting of ADA work of $300,000 a year? And I think some people's reaction was, OG, that's, that's more than we need to spend. The, our best guesstimate at this point about the amount being somewhere in the four to four and a half million, that would take 13, 14, 15 years to get through. Okay, thanks. Did you have any other information?
Yeah, I actually just pulled out the email. There's probably just a couple of points that might be helpful to the council as you talk about this issue. In accordance with ADA, what they're referring to is sort of a transition plan to come into compliance. Higher priority should be given to connections to government offices and facilities, transportation, including bus stops, bus stops, places of public accommodation, and employers, followed by walkways serving other areas. So I think just as a general guideline, there's probably not a lot left outside of those areas in Tacoma Park, but those are the things that priority should be given to.
Say that again, Governor.
Sure. It's government offices and facilities, transportation, which would include bus stops, places of public accommodation, and employers, employment centers, followed by walkways serving other areas. The other thing that I have mentioned, which is something we have not done yet, this is obviously still kind of a new process for us, is one of the things when developing a transition plan, is that an opportunity should be provided to interested persons, including individuals with disabilities or advocacy organizations for disabled persons, to have the opportunity to submit comments relative to the transition plan. So that's something we have not, have not done yet, and probably should. In terms of the enforcement efforts that I mentioned, it actually has a name. It's called Project Civic Access. And to date, there have been 170 communities, more or less, that have been cited under that program, ranging from very small towns to obviously very large jurisdictions such as Fairfax County.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Councilmember Robinson?
I made some comments earlier during council comments, which I probably should save for now, but it allowed me perhaps to consolidate my thoughts. And that, I'd like to make sure that we include, kind of along the lines of what's required for the plan, general walkability on an entire sidewalk segment. What I'd not like to see, as an example, I'll bring up Allegheny Avenue again. What I would not like to see is a really nifty ADA access on the ends of each blocks where ADA is required, and then not do anything in the middle where a wheelchair can't get through, because there's only this much room on either side of the telephone pole. And I, and kind of along the lines of what you just mentioned, Barb, well-used routes, whether, I mean, it's sort of like the dirt path, you know? There's a phrase for that, where you put a sidewalk where there's a, where there's a worn area in the dirt, you know, or in the lawn, that's where people want to walk. And if we could find, get a sense of where people want sidewalks in that, in that kind of way, and my little survey over the, over the last week gave me a really good, a really nice, strong feeling, like, oh, all these people from near Pinecrest and Spring Park and Circle Woods and all those areas want to get to downtown, and there's only a couple of ways to get there, and Allegheny's big, and it's the worst sidewalk perhaps in the city, with, I swear, there's like 15 poles sitting right in the middle of the sidewalk. It's just impossible. But I know that that's a huge project. I mean, to move all those poles.
Or go around them.
Or there's nowhere to go in many of them, and, because it's, there's berms that are holding people's sidewalks back. It's a hill, it's a steep hill. Yeah, well, I mean, it's huge. So I want to make sure that we couple ADA with other considerations, and that we're not, that the cart is not driven only by ADA concerns. And I think, as far as Project Civic Access, is that what it was called? That I would, I would guess that we're already doing a pretty good job of addressing ADA requirements, and that if, if we were going to be compared to other, other towns or places about how are we doing compared to other places with ADA, with a plan, I would guess that we're doing pretty darn good. Not to minimize the importance, not to say we shouldn't keep going, but that's my feeling is, let's integrate it with, with well-used routes and general walkability, what people want, and include it in. And I particularly vote for, at least thinking about Allegheny, and how we're going to deal with that.
There's my point for Allegheny. A little bump out.
Uh-huh.
Try that with the residents when I go to the parking spaces, see how they like it. Yeah, I know.
Another aspect of that is oftentimes utility poles are just on one side of the street, so we could take an approach where you make it accessible on one side, knowing that you can have accessibility, or the cost for accessibility is too high on the other side.
Absolutely. Yeah, don't need to do both ADA ramps on both sides, if we could, if we're not forced to, or?
Yeah. Councilmember Wright?
So just want to make a couple of points here. One, I think, is that probably in that plan, you also get credit or penalized for building new sidewalks as repairing or making current sidewalks ADA compliant, or more ADA compliant, I would imagine.
My understanding, and Daryl, please correct me if you have a different opinion, the interesting thing about ADA typically is that if you have a sidewalk, it is required to be compliant, or for the governmental jurisdiction to be moving in that direction. You're not necessarily required to construct new sidewalks. Obviously, this council to date, I think, has, you know, wanted to take a very balanced approach of how you spend money.
That's interesting. The second thing I want to, I mean, I would really encourage council members, if they're curious, to come and walk around in North Tacoma. I'm happy to do it with them sometimes, and sometime. And this is not a criticism of Daryl. I think Daryl was, like, taking the direction that we gave her. But a lot of the improvements are very marginal, right? Like, so, Daryl, you can probably tell us a little bit, the ADA requirements are very, very specific, right? And the cross slope, for example, can be, if you're really truly ADA compliant, it's supposed to be flat or 2%.
2%, which is virtually flat.
Which is virtually flat. And in a lot of those cases, it's not even possible to get close to that. So we might, you know, we might have been going from 5% to 2%, or 4% to 2% in some cases. And for the amount of money we spent, I think the improvement was pretty marginal for a lot of those dollars. Some of, you know, there were some examples where, you take on Boston Avenue next to the park, that was kind of a combination of repair, you know, replacing a sidewalk that was like, not, asphalt, and building, like, there was a huge improvement, and really made accessibility, ADA accessibility to the park much greater. But a lot of the stuff was minorly changing the grade or the slope, and often when you, if you're going to redo a ramp, then that means you have to do this whole grade change further up, which again, is a pretty marginal grade change when you look at the whole thing. So I'm not in favor of doing what we did in North Tacoma through the rest of, you know, it's mostly the Penn neighborhood and Hodges Heights. I think that you wouldn't see the value that you could get doing either a more targeted approach to like, improve, you know, decide really around the city where the big ADA issues that, you know, we probably each know them in our ward, or building new sidewalks, or using that money, as I've said, for other public safety issues. And I'm not, I think the residents are right. I'm not interested in doing that in the rest of my ward, and getting a lot of criticism for very marginal improvement. And I'm a proponent of ADA, generally, I just don't think for the vast majority of the disabilities that people have, we're really talking about improvements that, that make a difference in any way. There's a few places, like, I think the work on the kind of Holt Crescent, the sidewalk was in really bad shape, and it needed to be replaced. There's a, there's a spot on Tulip, kind of where Spruce, or Spruce runs into Tulip, that is really broken up, and the sidewalk's problematic. But there aren't a lot of places where I think there's significant benefit to be derived. And I would not be in favor of spending, I mean, it's $410,000. And in this budget, either to disperse it to make greater progress in what's truly, would have an impact on people with disabilities, or to take that money, and, you heard the chief, we could spend $100,000 on something that he's wanted for a long time, which is a civic or a community engagement officer, getting the community more involved. Or we could use it to fund other public safety activities we already do, and use that money to hire a sustainability coordinator that's, no longer needs to be used for, or build a general fund if we think things are going to get worse in the future. There's just a lot of options. So that's, that's kind of my perspective. I'd be happy to walk around with anybody, and we could look at, you know, the places where there are changes. Some residents took before and after pictures. I just don't see the value for the money.
I might just add a few comments. I did do a PowerPoint presentation of a lot of the work that we did in North Tacoma. Of course, my perspective on it is slightly different than Councilmember Wright's. We did set as a city threshold that we would only address a sidewalk if it was greater than 5% cross slope. So we didn't go down to the 2% cross slope because of the issue of affordability and not wanting to replace the 100% of existing sidewalks, which would have been the case had we taken the 2% standard. So from our perspective, we took a very reasonable approach, and perspective, we took a very reasonable approach and elevated it to something that was affordable. The kind of changes that we saw were taking sidewalks that were 18 and 20% down to a less than 5%, you know, slope. And when we did replace them, we created them at a 2% elevation in the areas that we could. So the amount of improvement in terms of accessibility was pretty great. We had extreme issues in some neighborhoods with driveway apron cross slopes. Those were probably the areas where, you know, you get a curb ramp and you're up on the sidewalk, but you can't go anywhere because you're going to tip over in your wheelchair on the driveway aprons. Historically, when driveway aprons were put in, there was just no thought to maintaining the, you know, a flat cross slope across. And for, you know, 99% of those, we were able to work it out pretty well. You know, there were some that were incredible challenges, just given the nature of Tacoma Park and the hills and the slopes, as well as, you know, the fact that driveways have been in the places they've been for decades. So we did have some challenges with that. But in terms of making areas walkable, we also didn't focus on making sidewalks wider than they currently were in the existing ADA work. That's another place where we made a judgment call. ADA standards require a five-foot sidewalk. We were doing improvements to existing sidewalks that were 42 to 48 inches wide. We maintained those widths in areas where we thought it was significant to do so. If they were 42, we tried to at least make them 48. The law does give you some flexibility regarding what they call pinch points, so you can go down to 32 inches to get around a utility pole. And we did follow those standards. But, you know, we have our photographic dog and pony show, if you will, as well, and frequently heard from residents along the way thanking our construction crew for the work they were doing in terms of their own accessibilities, particularly elderly folks that may or may not be in a wheelchair, but just, you know, want to get around or getting their partner around and finding a challenge of getting through the city. So, you know, I can list those out in terms of what our standards are and how we go about it. But just given the nature of the city and the way it's developed, we do, in those older parts of the city, have some significant ADA challenges.
I just want to point out that there is this, it's not totally arbitrary, but we make a decision, that we decide 2%, even though, you know, 2% is the rule, we decide we're not going to quite get there. If it's between 5 and 2, we don't take action, or the sidewalks aren't as wide as ADA require. And it's kind of this, are you making an effort, council lot, towards whether you're being considered ADA compliant? So there's some arbitrariness in it. You know, I think Darrell made good judgments generally, but there is, there is some arbitrariness in whether you're exactly meeting the ADA requirement.
And Darrell, was there, how much of what work you've done so far was a sense of wanting to address in a holistic fashion a neighborhood or a street, so you don't have to kind of go piecemeal and come back? Were there pieces of it that you did that you might not have done otherwise, but it was like when we're doing street work, where you don't want to go hopscotch down the street and leave pieces and then have to come back to them later?
Well, given my understanding, when the program started, my understanding was we were going to start from point A at one side of the city and go through all the existing, you know, kind of a consistent construction plan until we were done. But that was my understanding of the program. We were going to start, and we were just going to learn and keep doing it until we were finished covering all the existing sidewalk, and it will take as long as it takes, and it'll cost as much as it costs. That was my grasp of the program. So we selected an area of the city to start in, first of all, just to get our feet wet, which was the Central Garland Flower Avenue, because we knew it had some challenges, and yet it was contained. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't in terms of traffic other than flower. We were going to be able to work within a very localized neighborhood and figure it out. And we also had some other work we were doing there, so we doubled up and partnered up with the projects. From there, we just went to where we had the highest concentration of existing sidewalks, where we knew we had ADA issues. So we started in North Tacoma, because that's the highest concentration of sidewalks, and then just, you know, arbitrarily just decided we'd go through the city, you know, as we went. So there wasn't the thought in the beginning of picking the worst areas, or, you know, picking the highest trafficked areas, because you end up with a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. Are people not walking because it's, you have an inability to walk? Or are people not walking because there just isn't a, you know, isn't a need, or isn't a place to go to from there? So we didn't put that kind of scope over the city and select those standards. I had a different approach, assuming we'd get through it all. You know, we can certainly change our approach along the way. There'll be a little bit more thought that needs to go into that, if you're going to pick areas or prioritize areas. One thing I will say is that I would be very uncomfortable not doing a complete street or a complete block. I think that just the rationale and the ability to explain it and make it make sense to people is, you know, that you, you know, you do a contiguous area, and it's connected, and you make sure that if you get up into that block, you can get through it and out, and maintain an accessible route. So I would say if we were to try to set priorities or identify particularly either heavy trafficked or problem spots, that we would do them on a, if not block to block, certainly street basis, so that we wouldn't kind of cut and paste our way through, but we would have some consistency in how we implemented it.
The source of my question was anticipating that it's a, it's cheaper to do it that way, because you can do all of your design and implementation in an area and be finished with it and go on to the next, as opposed to always having to remember that you had pieces that you didn't do and keep track of those, and even just the cost of discontinuous work when you're dealing with concrete. When it's a continuous pour, it's stronger.
Well, there's that. There's also just mobilization and setting up for the contractor. If he knows he's going to be in a neighborhood, he can set up, you know, good construction areas and just take care of it. If you're moving around a lot, you've got a lot of different costs.
And also issues of notification.
And, you know, one of the things I liked about our earlier approach is we could tell people we're coming. You know, you want to see what you've done, you can look at your neighbor's street, you know, we're coming, you've seen us. So there's, it helped in terms of the information sharing, it helped in terms of letting people know we were, what we were doing and why they could come out and see it. So just.
Thanks. Councilmember Clay?
So there are two things on this work session. One of them is the sidewalks, and the other one is the Ward Two pieces specifically mentioned. So I'm going to start with the Somebody said that you might not have to do ramps where our sidewalk was not wide enough for a wheelchair, but I want to point out that ramps are for more than wheelchairs. And so we would still have to do ramps in areas even where we didn't have a sidewalk that was wide enough for a wheelchair. There are new ADA regs related to all of this that go into effect on March 15th of this year, and so there are some changes to the law.
What are those, I mean, are the changes more stringent, less stringent, more flexibility?
They try to create a more common standard between the federal and state rules and create a safe harbor for folks who had done things previously under the, under the standards from 1991 moving forward. So there was, you know, it was less clarity. So I think it's more clear now about what the exact standard is, you know, is it the uniform accessibility standard, and what do those things mean? You can look it up on ADA.gov.
Thanks.
So anything that we had done from 1991 and later needs to meet the regulations. And my understanding is we're actually going back and redoing things that we've done between 1991 and now, that didn't meet the standards when we did them. So I think there's an interesting sort of catch there, is that while we might not be in trouble for not choosing a pre-1991 sidewalk or curb ramp that didn't meet the standards and doing that one first, we could actually be in trouble for having done work on a street or a sidewalk between 1991 now and having it not have met the ADA standards, which might be the driving force for the administration redoing things that we have already done, because once we've touched them, they need to meet the ADA standard. So we can actually get in more trouble, if you would, than for not having those that we'd already worked on meet the standard. And I think maybe one question is, you know, why, why didn't things that we previously poured meet the standard? So new sidewalks are required where they're needed for access. So, for example, we couldn't build a community center without sidewalks. So there are things that actually do require that you build sidewalks, and they are specifically listed, and they are, bus stops are listed. Any kind of a community center is listed, or a community activity that you have to provide access to. So ultimately, yes, we would have to have a plan to have those things in place and to provide access to that. So, for example, we have a bus stop on the north side of Ethan Allen, close to Elm Avenue, and there's no way to get to it along the sidewalk right now, because there's no, there's no sidewalk.
Can I have that for a sec?
Sure.
These are from which department?
They're from the Department of Justice.
Okay.
There are some rules in transportation, federal highway, but the ADA is, this is at all administered by the Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division. You may know the head of the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice right now.
Who's your constituent?
Lives in Tacoma Park.
Oh.
So let's see. Anywhere we, where, I guess where we, it says where we affect the roadbed are the sidewalks. We have to build sidewalks. So I have to look at that farther and look and see if that actually means, if we repave a road where there's no sidewalks on either side, does that really mean that we have to build sidewalks on it? That's an interesting question.
The interpretation of state highways, you have to build curb ramps.
You have to build curb ramps. That's ridiculous, because once you build the curb ramp.
You can't go anywhere.
You can't go anywhere, and you're now obligated, you're obligating yourself to build the sidewalks. And I would point out that state highway administration doesn't administer the ADA, and we should probably not be asking them what we need to do. But that's interesting, that we think we should build curb ramps to nowhere. Okay. Building new sidewalks increases the accessibility percentage. So one of the things about what the law says is that you, one of the ways it's phrased is that you have to make progress towards increasing accessibility. So an interesting look at that might be, okay, so we have all these old sidewalks that don't quite meet the accessibility standards. If you count our sidewalks overall, if we start building new sidewalks that do meet the accessibility standards, we are increasing the percentage of sidewalks that therefore meet the accessibility standards. And so we might want to look at that more to see if, in fact, we could start out by putting sidewalks in areas that don't currently have them. And I think that that would probably work well, except in the cases where we have done our sidewalk between 1991 and now, and it doesn't meet the standard, because clearly that would come first, because it's a, that's a different way that they ding you. They ding you for having worked on it and not done it right, versus ding you for not having made progress towards your plan. You have to have a plan, and you have to make progress towards your plan, and that plan has to include inclusion of the disabled community, which I think is the point that our city manager has made, that we have a plan, and we're making progress on our plan, but we maybe haven't done a great job of including our disabled community. Uh-oh, I can't read that one now. Have a, now we've redirected it. Oh, so funding. So part of it is that you, you could argue that you don't have funding to do the curb requirements, that you don't have enough money, because funding restrictions are part of it, poles in your pathway are part of it. However, I think if we have dedicated whatever $500,000 or a million dollars or whatever for the last couple of years to do sidewalks, and then we come back and say, you know what, I'd rather use this money to hire a gang intervention person for the police department, or I'd like to replace some salaries and then divert money over to this other activity that you then have, have not met the requirement, because you've clearly demonstrated that you have funding that is available and that you can use towards sidewalks, and now you're going to take that funding and you're going to divert it to something else. So that might be something to watch for, because we've demonstrated that we could spend, you know, a percentage of money on it. So those, I think, are things to think about, and I want to spend some more time reviewing the law, but those are kind of the points that I think are of interest. Clearly, we have to fix places that we've built since 1991 that don't meet the requirements, but I would wonder if we could, in fact, use building new sidewalks to make our plan, have progress towards an increased percentage of sidewalks in the city that meet the requirement. Next issue is the Ward Two sidewalks. And I think this work session, blue sheet, actually points to exactly what the concerns of the citizens of Ward Two are regarding the process of sidewalk development, and this probably will affect some of the other people in Ward Three and Ward Six where this is coming along. And there's that, when we originally did the sidewalk study and we certified the ranking system, we said at that time that when we went out to the communities to do the work, that we would reengage with the communities, that, you know, this was, this was our guidelines for things, but that we could have some flexibility within that. And the place where that would take place is at the point at which we started to do the design work. But if you read this, you know, it says pending council direction to the contrary, streets would include Boyd, Lincoln, 7300 Jackson, Larch Elm, and Lincoln, and Sligo Creek, and Auburn. And so then the question I would ask is, so if we do the design work for the $200,000, and this is already set, and it's not some broader look, and it doesn't include sort of a community engagement process, where do we have that process, where we then come back and engage the community around whether those really are the pathways that they want to take? And I think that's a reasonable question for the constituents to ask. And I think that gets to the heart of the, sort of, well, the heartburn essentially, that people along Central Avenue, and Auburn, and Elm, even the people who are supportive of sidewalks, who are interested in sidewalks, but say, we want to, we want to know first, like, what side of the street are you talking about? And does it have to particularly be this pathway before we engage? And I think that then we would get more support for those things. This process didn't do as good a job as it could have of taking in our citizen knowledge. And I always thought that this is the point where we would do that, when we would get to these issues. In the meantime, if we're going to roll forward, I would say, no, I wouldn't do a design study for Auburn Avenue right now. I believe that you can meet the same pathway requirement by doing Ethan Allen, which already has a poured sidewalk on it. You could just get the residents to stop parking on it in the evenings and blocking the sidewalk with their cars. I mean, there are people who park their cars literally across the sidewalk every day, and put a curb ramp in at the end, close to the Eastern Market. You know, you'd have a much cheaper pathway there. And then you've also got Devonshire, which is another access way to New Hampshire Avenue that I think might be, might be more interested in a sidewalk. But this is, this is the deal, is that there has to be some way to engage the community at this point before we spend the $200,000 on the design study. I mean, it doesn't have to be a huge, long, involved process, but it has to be sort of a call for people in a meeting to tell them what's happening, and if we were going to make a change, then that's when it would be. But people don't see that as an access way now, and I think that's what's upsetting to them in many instances.
I understand what you're saying, and one of the concerns, and I talked to Barb briefly about it today, was once, you know, we found that we were moving ahead, based on last week's council discussion with Ward Two, my thoughts were, I don't want to do any design before we start talking of Ward Two, because I, I mean, I can understand residents' frustration, but it also puts me in an incredibly difficult public forum, where I have one direction and not, and I have to answer questions I don't have an answer to. Can we stop this or not? I don't know. And I don't really appreciate being in that kind of conundrum. So I think the.
And we don't want you to be abused in that way.
Yeah, I think that the solution may lie in working with the council person to figure out what is the forum, because we will inevitably get criticized for, well, I didn't know. And if you had that one meeting where I should say whether I want this sidewalk or not, and it's more of a generic, open-ended, if you're interested in sidewalks in this particular stretch of streets, come and talk, or if you're not, come and talk. Whereas sometimes if you give a more pointed, here's where we're planning to put sidewalks, on these, 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 then you'll be sure to motivate and activate people. So it's a little bit of a, you know, challenge in how do we get the word out, and how do we get participation, and when is enough participation accomplished so that we could then move to design, and then bring the whole thing back again for another round of necessary and, you know, detailed. you know, detailed discussions about this tree or that tree, this side or that side, what about my plantings, you know, all those things that come along with putting a new sidewalk in. So, I'd be interested in talking with any of you offline about what's—you know, we're clearly at the beginning of a process. We started one in Ward Six. We'll tweak and continue to improve it. We're now moving, you know, into the next phase of design for another section. So, I think we need to continue to quickly evolve our process so that we're not kind of lost in a, well, I—you know, Ward Six person can tell me, well, you didn't have that—you didn't give me that opportunity. I don't want to get into an issue where I'm not treating projects equitably.
You've identified an eternal difficulty of too much information and therefore it seems like it's a fait accompli—
Right.
Or not enough information and I can't tell you anything, you'll have to come back to me after you've done more.
Right.
It's—it's an eternal problem.
Yes.
It is indeed.
Well, I—I said that when I wrote to the city manager and the Saskia people who asked me about it. I said, it's a conundrum for the staff. They're frustrated because they want to have more information to give the—the citizens, but the citizens want more—they want to make sure that they have input in the beginning. It is a chicken and egg thing.
Okay. I was going to go to Councilmember Schultz next, but I—the city manager keeps putting the light on and taking it off and putting it on and taking it off. So, I want to find out what it is over there.
No, I think—I just wanted to add, and I don't think we're going to resolve this issue this evening, but Councilmember Siemens had made an inquiry on the part of a—I believe it's actually a Ward Five resident. And those residents on Hilltop had submitted a traffic calming proposal. And one of the things I had indicated in my response, and Mayor, I'd like to talk to you about this tomorrow when you're in, talking about future agendas. I—I think it's great for Darryl to have some kind of offline conversations with each of you, but I think, as was indicated last week by many of you, there's a broader issue here that I think the council needs to have some consensus on in terms of—I forgot which one of you described it—is do residents have veto power if they don't want a sidewalk? And how do you all balance creating those pathways and connections through the community, for the community as a whole, versus what residents on a particular street may may feel? So, those are those who may not want it, but you may feel there's a community need. The reverse is, what do we do when we have residents who are very passionate about having a sidewalk, but maybe in a lower tier? And I—I think the one that comes to mind is Prince George's Avenue where I think that's the Tier Three, but they filed a petition, I believe, almost several years ago. Is that right, Councilmember?
Well, they filed it at the same time that you were doing the study, but what we were told at the point of the study was that—
Yes, hold on.
—because it is a—even though it would ordinarily be a Tier Three because of whatever its cost or whatever, because it's a connector between two already existing sidewalks and that pathway out to New Hampshire, that it would be moved up and would get poured in the Tier One timeframe. Has that changed?
It only depends on if we're in that area. I mean, we have to arbitrarily pick places to start from and have your—develop your routes, so.
What I would like to do is just work with the mayor and see if on that issue, in terms of resident input and how that all factors into new sidewalk construction, would suggest that the council have a specific work session about that because I think it would be helpful to have at least either some consistency or at least an acknowledged inconsistency that that's going to kind of be devolved down to each individual council member. But I think it would leave Darryl in particular in a better position to respond to questions from residents. And right now, we—we don't feel that we have that information and I think it is complicating the situation somewhat.
But I heard you going toward the—the request—I—I was expecting you to go to make the point about the kind of opposing initiatives of—there was the example of Prince George's that's been kind of hanging for years with a request or juxtaposed with the most recent request by the residents on Hilltop to kind of piggyback with the Ritchie study—
I think that's—
—and and kind of linking up to that and do those things move ahead of all of the other stuff?
That's correct. I mean, I think more than anything, what I think the staff would like to do is to have some of—you know, as—as much as it can be a relatively defined process, that we can explain to people how things are going to unfold, you know, what their voice is in the process, at what point that comes into play. Because I think what we often do as a staff is just look at trying to be very transparent and truthfully being equitable, that there's not any appearance created in one way or another that we're being preferential or truthfully somehow, you know, not doing what people want. I don't think we're going to resolve that issue this evening, but I do think it's something kind of separate and apart, I think, from the—the ADA retrofit work for sidewalks that currently exist. But it is an issue, I think, especially for Darryl's sake, that I think we need to get resolved sometime soon. And would like to work with you, Mayor, to get that on agenda in the near future if we can.
I hope for the councilmember's sake also.
Yes. Well, I'm just trying to get it on the agenda so you all can weigh in. More the timing.
Okay, so, just—I'll—I'll go to the other folks who want to make comment, but I just want to make sure that I understand where we need to be on this particular agenda item tonight. Are you—what are you looking for in terms of direction from us tonight?
This evening, what I think specifically we're looking for is we had $410,000 worth of ADA sidewalk retrofit work that we had discussed with the council back at the end of October. That has been put on hold, you know, until pending last week's discussion. And obviously, I think the council may want to consider the amount to be allocated on this year's work to what she may want to do going forward. But the specific issue that Darryl needs resolved is whether or not she's free to move forward with this $410,000 worth of work this fiscal year.
Okay.
Is that correct, Darryl? Anything else you need?
So, we—we need to resolve that tonight?
Yeah, she had contractors getting ready to get started in the next week or two.
Okay. And and we're at 10 o'clock and we've been on this item since 9:15, so we'll continue, but let's try and get to where we need to go. Councilmember Schultz.
That sounds like you're trying to hurry me up.
No, I'm just pointing out where we are, but I wanted to get back to you, but I wanted to get clarity.
If I were—if I—I can say it is that if that's what you were trying to do, I wouldn't blame you, which is to say hurry me up. I—I guess I'd like to kind of say that with regard to Councilmember Wright's comments sort of at the beginning of this discussion, that I think pretty much in concurrence of what he has said. And I—I noticed that basically on with your your report, Darryl, that we've spent about a million dollars, which you said, starting in April through the end of December, doing ADA work. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, about $800,000.
Yeah. And and at that rate, since the overall thing might be four to four and a half million in that hole to do the hundred percent of the compliance, I think we could afford to slow it down to a slower rate of dollar expenditure on ADA and still be doing good progress. I mean, I understand that the—the case that you cited, Barb, with regard to Fairfax City is—it's kind of sobering. Lord knows, we don't want to put ourselves in that position where the memorialist having to comply with what amounts to a consent order. The Department of Justice got enough problems.
Especially issued under the signature of one of our residents.
Yeah. But, you know, to me, if we had that amount to say $500,000 a year, you know, we—we would still get the whole thing done probably in about eight years, which is a lot. That's pretty darn fast, considering the fact that we're only proposing to redo our streets every 20 years and and put the rest of the money into, well, other kinds of stuff, including non non ADA s—new sidewalks, as well as some of the things that Councilmember Wright was alluding to. So, that's sort of a ballpark. I think that, you know, that would show us that we're making steady progress and and isn't so slow that it would take us, you know, 20, 20 or 30 years to get it done. Ward Six has kind of been like a guinea pig for this process and I think we've made some good—we've—we've made some good progress, you know, in in Ward Six and this thing. And we've come up with this exact issue that Darryl alluded to of—we had a meeting in December with New Hampshire Garden residents and and one of the—some of the comments were, well, this this looks like a fait accompli because you've got these engineered drawings, which were about 10 feet long, and it's showing minutia. And, you know, and you were taking—and also, the meeting in Hillwood Manor, a few days la—a few—the following month, same sort of similar comments, but as you said, we don't have those kinds of details and what's the point? And so, one of the things that we agreed on then was that for subsequent meetings on this, that the city was going to have to send out U.S. mail notices to people in the wards because doing it lists serves—I think at the Hillwood Manor, we had five people show up. And then after the meeting was over, a number of—I got a number of contacts from people saying, well, we didn't even know about the meeting because so forth and so on. So, I think that once you've done that as a policy, once you've sent a, you know, a document in the U.S. mail to people and if they don't show up, for whatever reason, then at least you have—the city has some ground, firm ground to stand on, to say, we we made a reasonable effort. And that's all you can do, supplemented by whatever else technology allows us to do. Because beyond that, it's just just to reach a point where you just don't know what else to say. So, I would encourage that kind of a policy going forward. And with regard to the veto thing, this is a question you raised with me way back, a couple—several months ago, Darryl. I—I said, the—the problem I have with the tool design study is that it does an excellent job of inventorying, particularly with ADA compliance, of what the situation is in every street in in the city. But it did not and was—they were not asked to talk about what what the actual need was in terms of pedestrian traffic. And and that was not part of the study. And the people that know that best are the people that live there and walk those sidewalks or don't walk the sidewalks that they wish were there. So, I think we have to, going forward, while we want to continue to use the tool design group as a guide, I think we have to put more emphasis on on what what the residents want within reason. And I say within reason because I think—to use Wildwood Drive as an example, that's a heavily pedestrian street. It's full of school buses every morning and afternoon that come through. I don't know how many of them come through. And and that alone, I think, justifies having a contiguous sidewalk that runs the length of it. And if if one of the group of the residents in one city block got together and said, we have a petition and we don't want sidewalks in this block, I just don't think that's a tolerable outcome. I think there—it's a judgment call, but I think there's other cases where, like in my ward on Lancaster, that runs one block, doesn't connect to anything at either end in terms of a through street, that putting a sidewalk there, regardless of what the tool design study may have shown for that, and I frankly don't recall, it's just not that important. The fact that there may never be a sidewalk, I think, would be an acceptable outcome. But that can be worked through, I think, with consultation with community like we were just talking about. The—the last comment or question I have, going back to this blue sheet, it talks about needing for Ward Six to—to—to remaining balance in these two contracts is about $118,000. Well, that's for the design work. Is that not correct?
Yes.
But that does not speak to the actual installation work, which isn't in this blue sheet. And when we started out with this process for Ward Six, the design work, I—my understanding was is that we'd get these engineering meetings more or less done during the winter time with the community and we would build these sidewalks in FY, the current fiscal year. And I'm just—I'm just curious to find out, you know, are we going to do that in this fiscal year or or are we at least going to be able to get that construction completed in the early part of the next fiscal year, say, in the fall? Because I just—I—I need to know what to tell people because it's not self-evident from from this blue sheet.
I think a lot of that will depend on the council. Candidly, I think, as we talked about last week, we had provided some estimates to construct certain sidewalks in Ward Two, some estimates for actually constructing the measures coming out of the Ritchie Avenue Traffic Calming Project. You know, there's a lot of different things that have been kind of bandied about, I think, last week. The council, we said, the five of you who were here, seem to be wanting to strike a balance between doing some ADA sidewalk retrofit work and wanting to balance that issue, have, I think, probably for years, against some new sidewalk construction. Obviously, there's also been some discussion about using the monies for other public safety type initiatives. Once again, I don't think we're going to resolve that this evening, but I do think it's probably an area where I expect there to be a lot of discussion on my proposed budget when the Speed Camera Fund comes up. And I think I got some general guidance last week, but I think even within the realm of traffic calming or new sidewalk construction, this may come down to councilmembers kind of reaching agreement on whose project is going to move forward first. And that's really your decision, not mine or not Darryl's.
Well, I—I'll—just to continue then, if if it were to turn out, and just speaking in a hypothetical sort of way, that we weren't going to budget our money for the actual construction, then I would sort of say, well, what's the—you know, let's not even bother to continue spending the money on the engineering because I think you're only going to get people to come out to these meetings to discuss the actual locations of these sidewalks, should it be on this side of the street or that side of the street, if they can anticipate that these are sidewalks that are going to be actually built within a reasonable time period. Because if they aren't, you're not going to get people to come out.
Darryl, correct me—any other question? A portion of Wildwood is to be paid for out of, say, for us to school monies. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that that's still the case. One of the things going on with Wildwood is that we're going to be repaving—we're scheduled to repave the section of Wildwood—
Between Anne and Anne and Kirkland.
So, we wouldn't—we would prefer to do the sidewalk when we were doing the paving because we have to replace curbing gutter.
Yeah.
Likely, we'll have to replace curbing gutter anyway. So, we don't want to get into a situation where we put new curbing gutter in only to move it or it's not quite right for a sidewalk.
Well, that's completely logical. Yeah. But I'm just thinking about the rest of Wildwood and some of the other streets that we've a—a great deal of the engineering work is completed on it.
Yeah, I think in the last—in the last discussion of this in the council agenda, we included construction cost figures for a section of Wildwood as well as a couple other sections within Ward Six. So, again, it's just a funding allocation.
So, I guess we're—we're—I agree with you. We're not going to decide anything on this tonight. It's just that we do need to make some decisions pretty PDQ.
Councilmember Wright.
Two things, just one, I wanted to kind of answer Councilmember Clay's point that we could be criticized for having had funds previously and saying we don't have funds now. I think that might be more true if we didn't have significant changes to the funding we received from other sources in our budget, right? So, we had specifics funding to around police aid as well as highway user funds, which you could make the argument, at least some of that is directly impacted and could be used—this fund—these funds could be used alternatively. So, maybe tougher if you're—you're adding something as opposed to to filling in. You know, I think the thing we have to decide, it sounds like that, you know, there was work that's going to start tomorrow or next week for this $410 and $410,000. I think that's the thing to decide tonight. I I feel pretty strongly we shouldn't move forward with that whole scale approach that was used in North Tacoma on these streets that are mentioned. I wouldn't be a proponent of going forward in that way. I would be open to sitting down and having a very detailed street-by-street look, Darryl, about where we—I—I agree with you, like, if we—there's one ramp or there's one area, we don't want to just do that section, we might need to do a block. But generally, I don't think we should spend that amount of money in the area. But generally, I don't think we should spend that amount of money in the area. I think there's higher priorities, as I've said before, and Fred reiterated. The one other thing I do want to add is, we haven't really talked at all about the environmental impact of building new sidewalks. Obviously, we're not going to deal with it tonight, but I do want to raise that issue. There's been a lot of back and forth in emails to us. Councilmembers might have different opinions about that. You know, I, I think we've gotten some criticism on the environmental side around dealing with trees and rebuilding sidewalks. I think generally, we've done a pretty good job on that. But it is this question of the value of building new sidewalks and the environmental impact that I think we should think about as we move forward.
Councilmember Robinson.
Are all of these in your ward, Colleen?
All of these streets that are listed?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Okay. So this is kind of a, a your ward thing?
Yes, it's like, and even it's just within a third of my ward, it's sort of the smaller section of my ward.
I'm, I'm of a mind to really politicize this in a certain way, and, and make sure that we send a certain amount each year in each ward, or sequentially, as, as you were thinking to kind of march through the city, but march through it by ward and have a budget for each ward. And then do the kind of outreach, which is possible, which I did over the past week, to get, at first get a sense of what people want, and then with us as intermediary between staff and all the requirements we have, and what people want, come up with a reasonable solution. And so, we don't, although there are some instances where a citywide priority is important, you know, even though one council member wants to spend money on this street, it's not a good idea, and that we always can hold the, have it be so that that, you know, that won't happen. But I think we have to ask people what they want. And then, once we get from them what they want, we have to, we on the council have to determine what's possible and what we can do. And so, in that light, also, I don't think that this, we can't spend less than last year, argument holds any water. It's the maintenance of effort argument for the school system in, in, in Maryland. And, and I think it's just a, it's just a way to get our, get everybody into trouble as far as, as far as fiscal matters goes. So, I'm ready to defer to, to Councilmember Clay on this particular $410,000. If that's what she wants, unless there's some really rotten reason for doing it.
That's not her fault.
No, 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 no. The $200,000 in the streets are mine, the $410,000, I don't think, is any of that happening in Ward Two?
No, that's all Josh.
Uh, one and three.
Yeah, so, that's you, one and three, that's you.
I'm, I guess I'm missing, where's the three?
Paragraph three is all about Ward Two, but paragraph four, down here, the ADA sidewalk retrofit.
Sections of hedgesites.
That's.
That's one.
That's all Ward One.
And. Unless you're going across Maple up in the grant on, towards Carroll, that, that would be Dan.
So is that the case? You'd be, that?
Uh, no, when I say hedgesites, I'm focused around the school.
Right. Well, again, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't see how we're going to get through this unless we each kind of own a budget for our ward and figure out what's best for our ward, and which streets make sense, and what people want. And if it's new sidewalks, although I wouldn't be in favor of new sidewalks because of the environmental issues, unless they're really, really needed, you know, there's a certain amount of give and take up here, and we could argue this until we're all blue, green, purple, and every other color in the face, so. So if this is what, if this is what Colleen wants, and what Josh wants, then let's go for it. If Josh doesn't want his portion, then let's bag that portion and just spend the amount in Ward Two.
Councilmember Clay, then Councilmember Snapper, then Councilmember Seaman. The more we talk, the more the lights come on. I could cut it off now, but then I'd get it for that, I'm not going to go there.
Colleen's already talked.
Everybody's already talked.
I've not already talked.
He's not already talked, and my comment is short.
Make your short comment.
My comment is that I, I understand what you're saying about giving the council members some control, but I wouldn't like to have an individual budget by ward. I think that there are historic inequities, and I think there are other big challenges to, to doing that. That's my comment.
Councilmember Snapper.
Yes, I have a short comment. One is, other parts of the ADA law that I'm more familiar with, I will tell you that the courts, if this goes to court, have not been receptive at all to the arguments about, you don't have the money. And the reason, I believe it's wrong, is that they divide the money you would need to spend by the total city budget. That's typically how they do it. And since any amount you spend is going to be a small fraction of the total city budget, then money is not a, a barrier to doing the work. So if we did get sued and it went to court, any argument about, we're not, you know, any kind of money argument would just be, you know, laughed out of the, out of the court. So I do think that we have to take seriously the idea of having set aside, you know, a few hundred thousand, I think it's a very small amount myself, to do this work. We need to continue spending that money. Question, of course, is how to spend it. I happen to support most of it with, most of the spending that are proposed with some of the modifications that you all have suggested. And I'll stop.
Councilmember Seaman.
I have lengthy comments. First of all, I, I, you know, this idea that the council members would be heavily involved and would have heavy community involvement, I think were the, the things that the traffic study was hoping to minimize when it was proposed. It was a study that, as it turned out, the way that it, that it was developed, I was, I did not support, but, because I didn't think it included some of the considerations, as Councilmember Schultz mentioned, of traffic patterns and things like that. But nonetheless, I think what we're really talking about is more than ADA tonight, we're talking about ADA and sidewalk improvements, or installations. And I would just support Councilmember Wright on what he said, and I think, I think we do need to have much stronger community input than we've had. And I think it's unfair to Darryl and Public Works to kind of put them in the middle of this. You know, this is something that, unfortunately, the traffic study hasn't been able to eliminate, so we've got to, to take the bull by the horns and, and be more involved in the decision-making on, on which sidewalks that we do implement and the ADA improvements. I, I join Councilmember Robinson in deferring on these particular issues to the individual council members, but I think overall, we need to develop a plan for all of the sidewalk installations, on whether we do them or not, and the ADA improvements, we have to do, but we need to have some, some participation in the, with the community and the council in those decisions. And again, the environmental issues that were brought up, I think, are important, something that we neglected in the past, so. I don't know if that is brief or long, but there it is. Thank you.
And I'll make a few brief comments.
Let's cut it off.
I'll just say that I, I'm comfortable moving ahead with ADA compliance. I feel like there have been various times or various comments when some of us have come across as, like, let's slow this down as much as we can, we don't want to go there, we don't want to spend the money, there are reasons to do other things with it, there are reasons to think about other ways of doing it, there are ways to get around things. I'm taking more of an approach of, this is something that we need to deal with, this is something that there's a good reason to deal with. I see mobility issues, maybe more than many of my colleagues, or many of the residents of the city, since I spend a fair amount of time at Riderwood, where there are 3,000 residents, most of whom have mobility issues. I'm constantly dealing with people who have difficulties walking outside on sidewalks that are all ADA compliant, and just the slightest little incline leads them to grab my hand, because they're afraid they'll fall in perfectly dry weather. And so, I'm, I'm constantly aware of the need for as much ADA compliance and as much support of the spirit of the law as we can do. I'd like to see us move forward with spending. Last week, I was saying, oh gee, can we, can we commit $300,000 a year to ADA compliance? I'm, I'm now, after all these discussions, ready to say, I think we should spend $500,000 a year on ADA compliance. And just get us through this in a timely fashion. I could see moving forward to get this done if there is particular concern about particular areas that were targeted for going next. I could see saying, fine, we'll move on, there are others that need it, we'll just keep doing it. And if we don't want to put the $410,000 toward particular neighborhoods that are on the, on the table tonight, we can say, fine, let's put some amount toward the, the next ones, and let's get the people who are ready to do the design work and do the construction work, and keep them moving. And I think that we have talked some, about some of the environmental issues about sidewalks. I think that some of the people who are saying we shouldn't do sidewalks for environmental reasons are wrong, and I will be happy to talk to them at any point about that. And I would say we just need to go forward on this. But it's not tonight. Anything else you need? Okay, we'll move to the last agenda item.
You'll have to tell me what was decided.
No.
You can't tell anybody at this point that they can go ahead and design the next piece, but we will come back to this with the possible other ways to go forward and work on this.
I mean, just to recap, I mean, what I'm hearing is we are not moving, really, the specific agenda item was the ADA sidewalk retrofit project. Obviously, there's very different feelings on the part of the, I think everyone recognizes both the legal, as well as the kind of moral obligation to provide accessibility. I'm hearing different thoughts about how we do that. What I would suggest is if we're, Darryl, if we're not moving forward, obviously with the $410,000 worth of work, it sounds just like this fiscal year. But I do suggest that we spend some time, and in the very near future, developing a transition plan that does meet the requirements of federal law. We just need to have a plan, and I'll work with Darryl and Suzanne to see if we can bring that forward.
And as soon as we have it ready, it will go on the agenda.
And the other parts, what's happening to the other parts?
But the, the design work is going to go ahead.
Right, I'm sorry, and I.
The new sidewalk work, my sense was, nobody was saying, go do that.
Well, as I said to Jesse an hour ago, the first couple paragraphs on the agenda cover sheet were really meant to recap kind of the decisions that were made last week. If I could go back in time, I would have started with paragraph one and the last two paragraphs and skipped everything in between. I do think there is some discussion to be had, just about, you know, new sidewalks and how all that gets balanced against corrective action, but that, that's for another evening.
Proposed pavement study.
In a nutshell, we'd like to propose that the city hire a firm to do the next pavement study, a street assessment study by new technology. For those of you around, back when we had the first pavement study done, or at least in my recent memory.
The first one was about 1990.
Yeah, I was going to say, in my recent memory, in 2004, it was the more traditional survey, which is done on foot with trained traffic engineers that, you know, count and measure and calculate and come up with charts, and it's very labor-intensive, it generally takes about four to six weeks to complete. And the kind of prices we were getting and talking to several engineering firms was in the $50,000 to $80,000 range for a pavement assessment, which would then basically give us a pavement condition index for each street in the city by block, and that would be the basis of our paving priorities for the future, until we got through, which has been the council's direction since 2004. We want to make sure all city streets are maintained above fair condition. So it would give us our marching orders to address those, until we then redid the condition study again. We've been able to talk with a firm that uses a digital technology, kind of like the Google Maps, Google Earth strategy, where they have a van that drives down a street. It's got computer detection units underneath, as well as cameras afore and back, and they drive each street and take a 10-foot wide picture of that street, and from that, develop the same kind of pavement condition assessment that's done traditionally by, by hand and by eye. They make some assumptions regarding, they can't drive, you know, 22 feet of every street, and they just do a 10-foot swath, and they try to drive the area that's in worst condition. Obviously, there will be issues with parked cars and whatnot, but it's a, an overall evaluation. One of the things that it does do is it puts everything in a GPS mode, it puts everything electronically, data electronically available. The other opportunity it provides us is, while they're doing the video footage for the street and the right-of-way, anything in that right-of-way within 10 or 15 feet of the curb line is also photographed and can then be assessed and geo-located, and that would include everything from trees to street signs to pavement markings to curb cuts to inlet tops. Basically, you just have all your data gathered. And the pricing we've got from this company so far is basically to give us, what our focus is, is the pavement condition index. That's, that's the pros, the product that we need. However, this technology will also enable us to gather additional data that then we can be trained to work with and use. And for instance, if we wanted to evaluate street signs, I wouldn't have to, you know, rely on staff's recollection of which sign goes where, what sign was there. We'd actually have all the data located and condition evaluation of the signs and an exact location for each of the signs and the type of the signs. And we could also take a better look at a, a broader, you know, you can look at something on, on paper and get the whole sense of the street, find out where you have heavy concentrations of signs versus where you don't, and better allocate their spread out throughout the street to make sure they're located in a, in a less sign pollution way, in a more effective way. So it gives us a lot of opportunities. The cost for this kind of evaluation is much less. The pricing that we've got is under $30,000 for the pavement condition survey, the assessment, and the data gathering. We would have additional costs that we hope we can manage in-house to convert all that right-of-way data to actual, you know, get it geo-located on our GIS program. That would be for another day, but we'd have the data available. This company is located in, in Maryland and Columbia, and has a contract through the city of Virginia Beach that we've been looking at to do the very same service. They do service throughout the country, a heavy concentration in New England and Florida and Texas, I think. They do also have some jurisdictions here in the state of Maryland and in Virginia. Virginia Beach contract is one that was recently let. It's a three-year contract, they're in their first year, providing the identical type of services that we're looking for in terms of the pavement condition index. The one other thing, not to get too detail-oriented, is that in addition to their pavement condition assessment that they provide us, once they gather all the data, they, engineers evaluate it, print out, you know, a list of the streets and the pavement condition information. They also provide us software that enables us to plunk different figures in. If we wanted to have the $500,000 street resurfacing budget, and we wanted to dedicate 100% of it to resurfacing, what, what would that mean for our streets over any length of time? How would, you know, what would our general condition of our streets be, using that kind of allocation? If we wanted to put 20% into slurry sealing or, or crack filling versus, you know, 100% of it into resurfacing, what would that mean? So you, it enables you to let the computer evaluate a great deal of information, more than we can do just ourselves, and play out different scenarios, different funding scenarios, and giving you an answer based on what your condition rating will be over time with various types of decisions. So it seems to be a, quite a useful tool that we could, could access in this way. We have funding available within our city engineer's budget to complete this study. And so, providing that there is support for it, we'll move forward in that way and bring back ordinance for the council for authorizing the participation in this contract through Virginia Beach.
Okay. I just want to ask one quick question about the origin of this agenda item, before I go to my colleagues. Is this something that is coming to us now because this opportunity is available, or did we have the need to do the type of study? Did we anticipate doing, again, the type of study we've done in the past, because every so often you have to do them, and we're on that timeframe, and, oh gee, this opportunity came along, and this is. that timeframe, and, oh gee, this opportunity came along and this is a cheaper, better way of doing it, getting more, but we have to go here anyway in some shape or form?
Combination of things. We had our past pavement condition study brought us through to what we estimated to be fiscal year 2011, this being the last year, to address all the streets that were identified as worse, yeah, worse than fair. And so it was time to do it again. It was a failure on my part to put specific itemized funding in the budget. I was operating under the assumption that the next study would be funded through the capital budget pavement resurfacing program, so it just wasn't in my thought pattern to identify it as a separate item, separated from that, but in understanding now that we prefer to have it identified in a, as a separate item rather than use those capital pavement funds.
And those past studies had cost in the neighborhood of?
$30,000 roughly, low 30s for the, for the one we did in 2003.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. My recollection is that the previous study included a lot of manual assessment, including core samples to assess the road surface base. Does the proposed method do subsurface analysis?
We haven't included that in the work that we've done. Basically, every city street and every block had a core sample, so we don't feel like we need that additional information. What we will be doing is providing those core sample data to the evaluation firm so that when they're looking at the data they get from their digital computers, they'll also know what the subsurface is beneath. And sometimes that will affect a decision as to whether or not, what type of reconstruction you need to do and how long a street might last if you, you've got some failure and you know you're on eight inches of asphalt. That street's going to last a lot longer than if you've got some failure and you know you're on two inches of asphalt, so. It will help them provide us a better product in terms of longevity expectations with certain conditions.
I would support this and encourage you to bring a resolution back to the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
I just want to make sure we're not reporting any of this data to the Fusion Center.
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, there could be a new Fusion Center. Councilmember Clay.
I think it's time to do another street survey. I would, I would just ask that we make sure that we have a full inventory of all of our streets. I think we figured out a couple. I know Palmer Lane was left out, and maybe there was another one also that didn't get in on the study. Is that right?
I, it's not coming to mind, other than Palmer Lane.
But yeah, let's, let's make sure we have all the streets before we do.
And we got Niagara Court?
Niagara Court is gravel, so it wouldn't be.
But it's a street.
It's a street, it wouldn't be assessed, given that it doesn't have pavement.
Whoa.
I think we just show it off.
It should be in the database, it should be, it should have some assignment.
Unless it's an assignment to pave, which would be a separate process. It wouldn't be a resurfacing project.
If we're, if we're counting on this to be our comprehensive GIS database, are there phone poles or signs or things that would need to be in that?
Well, it's a very short street, so my guess is that there's not, but there could be a utility pole or two. There's certainly no signs, but.
Well, we should add those, and is it, and the Linden Court goes down below, and then there's the, is that, is it the Linden Lane or the connect?
The alleyway, we call it, an extension of Heather Alley, but yeah.
So Heather Alley, I think, should be included and probably other places like that. Should be comprehensive.
My old friend Boyd Alley.
At this point, everywhere it's paved would be where the equipment itself would be, would be traveling.
I think I've heard some support on the council to extend beyond those already paved, just to make sure we've got everything in the database. I see a majority saying yes. Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you. I strongly support this and urge us to go ahead. I think this kind of information will be really valuable, myself, because as it says here, you get either side of the road as well as stuff on the road itself.
Councilmember Robinson.
Did you say that the core samples were going to be included into the data set?
The core samples we'll be providing to the engineers in the company so that when they're evaluating the.
I heard that, I heard that part. Will they be included into the data set, or is that irrelevant?
I will have to talk to them as to how that would interface. There may be a component on their end where they add base condition. I mean, the, the process itself does not do subsurface evaluation, it just does surface through, you know, radar down to the surface to identify ruts and cracks and photo montage for, you know, other things within the right-of-way. So there, there may or may not be a way to.
I'll encourage them to do it if they can. I support, it sounds like a great idea.
We do, we know what the, what the subsurface makeup is, and we know it by street and we know it by area, so we should be able to make sure it's blended together.
Don't need to include it unless you're going to display it and have to manually link it together.
One of the other points of interest, though, which I know you're late and tired, but my brain's going now, so, is that with the, we would have an opportunity with some additional funds to provide a web-based module.
Oh, yeah.
That would then allow the potential for interactive use of the system so that, you know, if you could put it on the city's website or make it accessible to folks, so if they wanted to know, you know, what streets the city's scheduled to do and pick a year, you know, they could plunk in and see that, or they could go into the database, you know, it would be limited, read-only kind of stuff, to identify, you know, where the speed bumps in my area, or what the signs look like, or what's the pavement condition of this road or that road or the other road, or how many roads were paved in Ward whatever last year, you know, it would have all the ability to interface. That's a $10,000 charge to get the web module. I don't know what the cost would be to make that module usable.
I'd look in, I'd look into that, as long as it doesn't include another PowerPoint. If it includes a PowerPoint, it's off the table as far as I'm concerned.
My, my understanding is it just provides some level of the information, the actual video feed that we get, and lets people see it and interact with it.
Cool. Councilmember Schultz.
We have this policy here stated in the first paragraph of a 20-year resurfacing cycle. Is that, is that, is that what it's called? Because, is that right?
Yes, that's been our goal.
But to what, how close do we actually get to that goal?
Well, we just established it in 2004, so we haven't, we haven't been able to go for around. One of the things that we'll be able to do with the software is it'll give us pavement condition index, we'll, it'll, we'll tell it we're going to spend $500,000 a year, and then it'll tell me whether or not I'm going to get my 20-year cycle or not.
Uh-huh. Okay, well, that's, I didn't know that. I thought maybe this policy had been around for a while, because I know the street that goes in front of my house hasn't been paved in 25 years, and it's starting to show signs. I don't know, maybe it's 30 years. From, just a technical question, some of the streets in my ward, the curb pans are literally collapsing, and so you get this separation of the concrete curb pan from the asphalt path or road path. Will this pick up that kind of, and you'll see that as well?
Yeah, the cameras will be able to see the curb line.
And there's other places where there's been some sort, some sort of subsurface collapse or something, where all of a sudden you'll just have a severe depth, like, not a large one, but just, it's not broken, it's just sort of like, oops.
Failing water liner, or stormwater line.
It'll pick up that kind of stuff as well?
Yes, they, they have the ability to denote changes in depth across a 10-foot section.
Well, that sounds like fun. I would, I think it's a good thing to do.
Councilmember Wright.
I'm very supportive of this, with one exception, I'm not supportive of the $10,000 web module, particularly given the state of the city's overall website. If the city's website was, like, rocking and doing really well, I know we're working on that, but we haven't really made progress on it, then I might have a different perspective. But it would feel crazy to spend the $10,000 on that when I feel like, when most people can just walk out the front door and look at what their street looks like, they don't need to go assess on, on the website, when, when, you know, the website is just not a consumer-friendly website, so.
Yeah, I understand your point. We certainly don't have plans to purchase it this year, it won't be in my allocation, but it is something to know it's available. It could also be turned into the way that people report sign problems. They could go onto the module, identify the sign that's damaged, and tell us exactly what it is, where it is.
Sounds like a potential future investment.
Yeah, lots of options, you know, everything from hydrants to.
Streetlight outages based on where the pole is?
Well, we would have the utility pole location, whether or not we've, we could potentially use that database to then go back out and locate the lights on which utility poles. We could have all the utility poles plunked on the, on the database, which would make it much easier to then just add the light.
It's possible a light bulb just went on for Councilmember Wright.
Very dim light. It's too, too light for that kind of humor.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. Sounds like we're all in agreement that we should go forward with this purchase. And we don't have anything else on the agenda for this evening, so we're adjourned.